Call the city council budget workshop to order. Commissioner Smith, will you give us the prayer and pledge, please, sir?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Blanch, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Okay, I think I'm on. Tonight, we're in another budget workshop to go over some of the pending items that we still have left to get some final decisions, so we can determine how we want to move forward. I mean, over the past few months, we've had probably, what, four or five budget workshops? And we did set a millage rate of four point eight three nine nine that we had to submit to the state. So, but by next Wednesday, we got to set a tentative millage rate and a tentative budget that has to be advertised accordingly. So again, the purpose of this workshop is to address those outstanding issues. The items I plan to cover is the water, wastewater, reclaimed water fees and the rate increase. Um, the letters went out, um, for the forty percent increase. I'm sure everybody's gotten a lot of feedback pertaining to that, because it is a significant increase. Um, so we'll discuss that as well. Um, the general fund proposed changes as a result of some of the changes in the general fund. There are changes in streets fund. And then we'll look at the proposed tentative millage rate accordingly. And then there were some changes that the CRA board, um, approved for the CRA fund. This information has been shared with you previously as we were developing Fund 401 budget. Um, when you factor a ten percent increase in the rates, it gave generated a deficit, sorry about that, of about five point six and fifteen percent, um, four point three, four point four, twenty percent, about three point two. So we, at that time, proposed the forty forty fifteen to, you know, remove that deficit and cover some of the deficit rolling into this year as well. This is a, just a detail of the revenues and a summary of some of the expenses associated with each one of those proposals, identifying, again, the funding from reserves in each one of those proposed, um, levels of increase. So as a result of some additional meetings internally and, uh, you know, to try to minimize the impact on our customers, um, we have some information that we're sharing tonight in trying to reduce the increase to twenty percent if it's acceptable. So, uh, what is needed is additional cuts in Fund 401. And this list is, uh, is a proposed list of those cuts, um, to freeze two positions, the Assistant Director of Public Service and the Customer Service Specialist position, to transfer the city engineer's position to community development, because the majority of his time, I guess, is basically community development. And we did do a pension adjustment. Um, we, our actuaries gave us estimates based on a seven percent factor and a six point seven percent factor, six point seven five percent factor. Initially, the committee was, a pension board committee was reviewing that, but they went back and they decided that they're not going to go from the seven percent to the six point seven five in, at one step, they're going to do it in probably about five steps. So we basically updated our numbers based on the, the seven percent, because they're going to take a gradual approach. The lower they go, the more the contributions we have to make, in other words.
But the better funded it become, obviously, better funded.
It's the return on investments typically what it is. Um, so capital and other operating expenses, um, cutting one fifty for the water plant infrastructure assessment, forty seven thousand for a Ford F-150 pickup truck generator, a hundred and thirty thousand. Reducing the water treatment thing, reservoir pumping funding for two hundred thousand. A Ford Maverick pickup, thirty five thousand, sludge hauling trailer, a hundred and twenty thousand. Replacement of meter communication, a hundred and eighty-three. Some land purchase for the lift station seventy-seven, we're removing that. We could possibly do that out of Fund 403. And five hundred off the asbestos water main replacement project. We have about one point four in the current year budget that I think is probably going to end up rolling over. I don't think they'll be done with that by September thirtieth. When I looked at it a few weeks ago, we'd only spent about a hundred thousand out of that one point four. It may be more now, but that's how it was. And base stations, reducing that number to four hundred and twenty, I left a hundred and eighty in there. This is really on the utility side, um, to replace two of the old base stations and add a new one. Uh, Ford three fifty, eighty-five thousand, Vancon truck, four hundred thousand, F-350 utility bed truck, ninety-five thousand. So if we cut these additional funds, it helps us cover that three point two deficit I've mentioned back here and here. And it allows us to go forward with a twenty percent increase versus a forty forty fifteen percent increase for FY twenty-five.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
The water plant infrastructure assessment, what is that? I mean, it's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Deal.
My name is Theodore Alburu, Public Service Director. That, that money was placed in there for the assessment of all the water plant in order to find out what are the maintenance needs that is required. For example, we want to look at basically the bleach, um, how it function for maintenance, because a, assessment was never done. When this money was taken out, it meant that internal staff would have to go there and I have to work with them in order to perform those assessments.
So who's performing these tests or?
Nobody is doing that right now. I had just wanted to make sure that I performed these assessments so I can have a, a plan ahead to go on to see what all the maintenance need is, right? So I can project the cost for future year budget, right? So that was never done, that's why the money wasn't there. But I will have to then, um, in order for me to make this budget cut here, I have to make that adjustment and I will use internal staff and myself to go ahead and to make that assessment for each one of those plants.
I can think one of the things that we were contemplating, part of the reason we need that, is that we've got, how many, six water plants?
Yeah.
And do we, do we combine it or get, get it down to four? Do we leave it at six? Because all of the wells that we're now in the, in the mid aqua, aquifer now, we have to go to the lower aquifer at some point. We've got six or eight years to do it, but, so the question is, would we be better, if we've got to replace a, an, a, uh, well in the middle aquifer, would we be better to have bigger wells to go to the, the lower aquifer? But with the lower aquifer becomes more treatment. So it's, it's a, it's a complicated.
Right, it's a complicated balance there, but, um, it can be done basically by the use of internal staff and myself and engineers. So we decided to at least take this out of the budget and see what we can do with our time to make sure that we can address this internally.
I still don't understand, uh, and I won't say understand, you could repeat this. So by removing this, who is going to be responsible for the assessments of all our water plants?
It will be, it will be the, the, um, Nate, who is the person. It will be Nate, um, one, one of the chief plant operators, who will be assisting us, right, with the plant, um, maintenance person, myself and a few other people that I will be using to make sure that we get this assessment done. And this assessment is just in order to, to get what are the needs that is required. For example, like the mayor spoke about the wells, right, as one of them. But there's other needs there that need to be addressed. For example, if, if you look at, there is an existing pump, the pump may be twenty year old, right? Is it, you know, is it need to be replaced in the next two years? What are all the electrical panels, how old are those panels? It's won't be working now, but basically it, it can fail, right? So we're going to make those kind of assessment to, so that when I come back the next budget year, I have quantification information to provide to you. These are all maintenance needs that must be addressed because they're going to fail sometime. So each one of these things has various small component that is age. We have a very aged infrastructure, so that is what this whole thing is about. It's about making a, you know, a, a very broad brush preliminary assessment is, um, to make sure that, that this is happening. And there are many other component, this is a few I'm, I'm raising here. You have a bleach tank, you have, um, those bleeds that you realize is very corrosive, right? Um, how much more we have to remove, we have generators, right? Are they operational? What are, uh, the years of these generators, they're ten year old, they're fifteen year old. It is time for us to have a plan to replace them. So there are many other components of those things that has to be addressed. And that is what the, um, this small amount of funding was for. But basically, I could give it up, be because it would be just stop after tightening the belt and get it done.
So, so the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be for an, an addition of personnel or for an outside company to come in and?
Yeah, yeah, it, I had it there for an outside company to make an independent assessment.
All right, so now if you and Nate is going to start doing this assessment, a couple of other employees, is this going to take away from this, some of the responsibilities that you currently have?
Well, yes, it, it will, but it's not only Nate and Nate and myself. You know, you have some time, you have some slow period. I can use other employee and to explain to them exactly what I need them to do, right? You know, you have to do some research of information, find the aspect plan, understand what is happening. So there's some research internally as well as some field, field investigation. Um, you can trust me, I know how to do this. Because this is really an, a, an, a broad brush assessment. It's not like a detailed analysis that you're doing, right? Just to find out how, with infrastructure, the age, what has to be done in future years to replace them. So yes, yes, Commissioner, in answer to your question, you have to balance, to balance well the workload, it will take away some of the time from them, but we, we make it happen.
Would it be conducive to maybe hire a short-term contractor to come in instead of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, like you said, a broad assessment, but to bring someone in specifically for a short term to kind of do that assessment for you? You would be hiring a contractor?
Well, this money is for, is to hire a consultant to do it.
Oh, this was?
You're right, that's exactly what it's for, but, um, in order to make that cut together to three point one million dollars, this is the only place I could probably get that money to come out from. You see, I froze even the Assistant Director of proposition. All those are workload that I am currently doing with, with other people there. We have a lot of vacancy. So there's a lot of, uh, stuff that I am putting in and do, do at home and the weekend, everything else. I'm taking those week, you know, so I am making the sacrifice and I know a lot of staff is making those kind of sacrifice in order to make this work.
Because I also saw Freeze Assistant Director of Public Service Director, that's you. So if, if, God forbid, Mr. Deal, that if you're not here for whatever reason, I mean, who's your backup right now?
Each, each, each department.
You're right, each department manager, there's no backup, really. What I'm doing is to try, that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm trying to put a plan together so that if something's, God forbid, something happened to me, you will have a plan to go forward. There was no existing plan, and that's why it takes time to do this. And, uh, you're correct, we don't have the funding because of this right now to do that. Um, right planning situation mean you should have some, somebody in place to understudy and to take over. At this time, we have to take this, um, risk at this time here because of the funding needs.
I don't know, can we keep that, like, I, I just feel like, I mean, he's been doing this along for, what, three years, four years now?
Yeah, probably, you can be closer to here.
Um, and, you know, my, uh, our experience has been that we've lost some senior personnel and, and there hasn't been a succession to some of the senior personnel. And I'm seeing their, um, jobs being kind of split between this, uh, you know, among different employees and, um, there's no succession. Um, I'm, I'm a little concerned with freezing the Assistant Director of Public Services. And, and that's from experience of seeing what's going on with some of our senior staff, uh, exiting. And that's a, that's a concern to me. So I, I don't know what, I mean, I see this is on, sort of on the cuts, but, um, I mean, I, he's confident about the water plant infrastructure assessment, but I have a concern with that too, because water issue has been a big conversation here in the city of Apopka.
With every cut that is listed, there's no doubt that it's going to have an impact.
So I mean, he's, he's comfortable with cutting that, but, um, I'm, I'm not too comfortable with freezing, um, an Assistant Director of Public Services.
And, and if that position's been vacant for two years?
Yeah.
That means we've saved that salary for two years already.
Yeah, and it rolls into that reserve that has been used up.
And so the, the only fund for this particular funding comes from the residents?
Because the rates, go ahead, interest, go ahead, you want to go back?
Why don't you go back and, just for the public mainly, just talk about the difference between 401, 403, just because I don't?
Okay. Well, Fund 401 is what we call 401, your water, wastewater and sewer fund and your sanitation fund. And actually, your impact fee fund as well. But let's focus on the 401, your water, wastewater and sewer fund. It's considered what we call an enterprise fund. It's like, it's like a private, it's supposed to generate enough revenue to make a profit. Not only cover your costs plus, our rates are not at that level. We're continuing to grow, as you know, the city of Apopka, as I understand it, is growing way beyond Orange County. It's growing. And the rates have been kind of at three percent, three percent increase, three percent increase, six percent increase. Is this having, the rates are not, the funding is not there to cover the cost of repairs and maintenance. We have an old system and to deal with the growth. So we're at a point.
The 403s is the growth monies.
No, the, either way, we got customer growth, okay? So to deal with the growth, is the funding is not there, those are the impact fees, that's set aside for expansion. But to deal with the growth that's going on, the more customers that we're bringing on, the more repairs that have to take place, even with the meters and everything else, with the lines and everything like that has to be covered here. And it's just not enough funding to support that. That's why when you're trying to do projects that you had to do, as I understand it, like, correct me, Mayor, if I'm wrong, Rosenbacher, Plymouth, um, wrote Plymouth, the Plymouth system and the Northwest Recreation System, those fundings came out of reserves. And so now we're at a point where we're in a deficit, we don't have any more. So basically, when I said here.
We were under two consent orders, one was the wastewater plant we had to build or we'd have been shut down. Um, then the second was Northwest, under, we were under consent order there as well, so. When was that?
Can you, can you explain to the public what is a consent order?
And when that was?
Deal, you gotta come explain the consent orders.
To my understanding, I wasn't here, right? But back after twenty eighteen, you have, there were one wastewater plant. They were called the East and the West Wastewater Plant. What had happened, uh, when I read some of this literature, we had a plan that was in existence for, in design for the East Plant. But because, uh, of certain, um, regulatory standards and because the East Plant only, the West Plant only had a capacity of three million gallon per day and the type of development and the nitrogen content, it was not meeting the regulation requirement. That's what they had, they had a ten, ten, um, you know, nitrogen content to reach. Could not reach it because it was a old, um, type of, of, of a system. So basically, at that time, the Water Management District, right, which was back in, I think this is twenty fifteen, provided them a consent order, no development could take place, no permit, anything else, except you built another plant. Which, which, and that is how the East Plant was constructed with, with, well, with a grant, right? That East Plant has a five million gallons. So these are not because, these are why you give this consent order. Those are because you're not reaching the requirement, you have a development is taking place. And that's the reason why that new five million, um, can, um, MMD Plant was built for the wa, for the wastewater plant. I can come back and give you, uh, you know, a presentation and what the history, what happened there. But this was something really went on back in the twenty fifteen, um, um, era at that time. And, and that was the reason for the consent order. The one in Jason Dwelly, the one that I understand it, right, is that you had, you know, you had one of those, um, pond, I think they had this, this irrigation system already there. But you had a mixture of water, you had, you had the reused water was going there as well as this runoff, um, surface runoff. Well, you cannot have those water to be mixed, right? So they, so they came and wanted us to really have one pond for stormwater and, and solely for, for reused water. So that's from since that time in, in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, that the design was in place, right, in order for us to separate these reused water and to, and in order for us to use to, those pond. It is currently under design, we just had one project now on, on, is unbidden, right? For, they call it Little J D Pond, where we are constructing a pump station, everything to take the reused water solely from that pond, excluding any stormwater going to there and pump it to what the, the, well, the reservoir. So these are things that was in the making from since back in the twenty fifteen to now, that we, that come into the surface that we have the design and the plan. But that is how those consent order was in place, my understanding was, was. And this was something that I just read from some of the literature there.
So if I may ask a few questions here, so this is the first time here of consent orders that we had. For the Jason Dwelly Park, didn't we just approve funding in some capacity or in some way?
Well, yeah, yeah, because you approved the funding in order for us to con, to do the retrofit, the construction, right?
For, but it wasn't, it was exclusively because we have a consent order?
Well, it's because, um, we have to separate, for example, we have three ponds there, right? And you had reused water was going from our plant to there, but there were also stormwater pipes that goes into those pond. So we had to separate them, which it did, um, several year before I was here. But what they did not do at the time, we could not use that water. You see, that's, uh, I think they call it the, the East Pond, right? It, it, the one with the, with the kind of irrigation system that, that go, goes out there. We couldn't use that water and, and pump that water into the, um, into the tank, right? Because it was, the filtration system was not working, it, it, it defunct. So in order for us to fix those, you guys, um, I came back here to the commission, you approved that in the budget purposes. They were there in order for, because, for me to fix those. So you have to re-study it, get rid of those filtration si, uh, um, system, because they are underground, they're below the pond. They're not side of the pond too. So there's a lot of engineering had to be done. We had one of the engineering done, we bid that out, we have two more in progress, well, right now. Those things take three to four years to be done and a lot of funding in order to do that. So you're right, if you look at those, those information that come forward to you in the budget in the past two years, what for Northwest, what's for those retrofits that we have to do?
When do we have to get this done by, when is the?
They don't set the time, really, it's just you can't use it. For example, we couldn't, um, although we have the reused water there, right? We couldn't use it except we correct the filtration system and correct the system. So there were not a timeline, they're just telling, look, you are involved, you can't do this, right? You cannot mix it too. So we're just trying to correct, they didn't set us like a fine or anything else in doing that. He was just that you should, you, this should never happen. And this happened back, from my understanding, in the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, well, um, time. So you take this time in order for me, you know, to look at this and to fix it. But this design was going on prior to me being here. It just was piece me, it was just, I mean, you know, an evaluation, then a study fit, you know, these kind of stuff would happen. I just ha, would happen to come in and expedite it and try to get the plan out, right?
So, and Mrs. Sherman, are you able to send us a? A, a, a report annually for kind of our capex in this fund of where we're at with?
I can generate that.
Yeah, with, with reserves, where it went, how, what they were spent on and how we got to where we're at now.
It's taking some time, but I got, I, I can compile some information.
I think this helps to understand the narrative better, because we're not in a great spot. And what concerns me is that we're, this isn't even bare bones, this is no bones. This is almost where we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot to where one thing goes wrong and, and we're in a very bad position. So, a worse position than we are now. So the, the assessment, I think, i- is important to have, to know where we're at quality-wise with, with all of our items. And then we need to create a plan of what it looks like. If we're pushing all this off, is all this going to be on next year's budget then? And if it is, are we planning appropriately for that then? So there's, or are we just keeping pushing this off to where, again, we're in a bad spot? So those are my biggest concerns, especially with the asbestos water main, that project. I know you, you said there's some carryover funds, which I understand that. That's important though, that's, that's a health and safety issue, that I want to make sure we're taken care of. Um, and we need to make sure that we're not going, we're not cutting too much to where we can't perform. And I know what you're going to tell me is, well, we need the money for it. So I know there's a balance there. The other, other one that I had, um, the, the pension adjustment.
Yes.
What actuarial and what company recommended we do this?
And, uh, this was Empire. They, um, is the actuary for all of the pension board committees. And they basically, right now, in their estimates, they use about seven percent. But the pension board committees discussed taking that factor down. It was recommended, I think at some point, to go down to the six point seven five.
I don't know if I heard anybody recommend that in any of the meetings.
Well, I know they had a presentation, I know they were talking about it.
And from what I heard, everybody that re- represents in power or represents the company had said that that's not the best thing to do, and especially in these big jumps like that, we shouldn't be doing it. It should be much smaller incremental.
And that's what recently came about. What you just heard is what I recently have been told, that they decided not to go with that full recommendation down to the six point seven five, but to do it incrementally over a five-year period.
So what is it showing here?
Basically, we're showing that we had factored in the budget, the original budget, going to the six point seven five. Now I changed that to the seven, so we're.
Six point nine five.
Well, you're around that number. So instead of going, so it's a savings for us, it cost us more. The lower that interest rate, that factor is.
Right.
The more contributions. But since we're increasing that factor, that's why we have a savings.
Well, why isn't this reflected in that way then?
I'm saying it's, that's a.
It's not reflected in this paperwork, I guess, that, that's in this presentation, that the six point nine five is not reflected in this.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
You have seven point zero versus six point seven?
Yeah, because those are the evaluation numbers that I used.
So is the ninety-nine thousand based on the six point seven five or is it based on the six point nine five?
I don't have the evaluation based on the six point nine five.
So that number's going to, will actually decrease then?
Yeah, yeah, but it's, 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 I don't even know when they're going to implement that, that may be another year out.
Well, from the meetings that I was in with the pension, there, there was not a strong.
Really?
Resolve.
To the six point nine five?
For any reduction, they said that we need to look at that more, is what I was understanding of that meeting.
Well, I didn't attend the last pension meeting, Mayor.
Well, the, you know, they did the, uh, we made the, you know, the change on the, the makeup of the fund. And the fund, even with the changes which ma, which we made, which are positive to the rate of return, it was still six point seven, either six point seven four or six point seven six. So their rate of return is lower than seven. So back in twenty. So back in twenty, uh I I reduced, it was seven point two five percent. And I said, we need to get it down to what, a number that is that is um accurate or 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 more representative of what the long term. Returns have been on the sixty forty plan, so that's, we did that in in twenty and now we need to go down even farther as it to meet. What the 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 returns are, I mean, the last thing we need is a is a pension fund that's not, that's not funded properly, so it's a. All the numbers, you know, as I can tell you, when I was in in the legislature, we were, I won't say we were either seven and a half or something. And when we reduced the amount by quarter of a percentage, it was a four hundred million dollar change, so. You know, and we, so I would talk with Blanche, said, okay, why don't we, why don't this, instead of doing the the whole hit down to six, seven, five, let's just, let's gradually go down. Point oh five each year, we'll get there in five years and.
Yeah.
Well, that's what Empower and they they had re- recommended.
Okay.
Yes.
I only have the actuarial numbers, because this, this is what happens, when they do that, they have to update, give me an actuarial analysis on that. And they give me what those percentage of contributions would be. And so what I have at this point in time, I had the six point seven five because of earlier discussions that I had, and I have the seven. So if they haven't actually voted to go from the seven to the six point nine five. Have they?
No.
Okay, so they still are at the seven, correct? So that's why we're back at the seven.
And that's what this numbers.
Yes, that's what that saving represents.
And that's what throughout all of this, that's what that's representing?
Just just for this fund.
I know, but in the general budget, this is, and I and we can discuss it, obviously we'll get there, but that's referenced as well there, so.
Yeah.
Is it the seven, six point seven five, six point?
It's seven, it's seven. I know we wanna do six point nine five, I just don't have the numbers on that, I've, if if they vote to do it and I get the numbers, we can have that in the final budget. But right now, it's it's the seven percent, I don't know if they're gonna even have a pension board meeting by the time we have a final budget. So I'm back at the seven percent, which is what they're basing everything on at this point.
I guess I just don't understand why we're seeing a a revenue increase then, if we're staying at the seven and you say these numbers.
Cause we, the original numbers that we had in the budget was at six point seven five, that's why you seen a savings.
Which never should have been.
Well, I.
It never should have been, but that's, that's okay, yeah, I wanna make sure. And this is when, especially in a in a time when our city is seeing a lot of deficits throughout all of our budgets, it's not the time to arbitrarily do that, so. It wasn't voted on by that board, so to preemptively do it doesn't make sense either, especially when we're cutting such big budget items. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I don't have any questions.
Anybody else?
Mr. Smith?
Alright, so I think we.
So that's it, I'm gonna move it on, so everybody's good with cutting these items and move it to the twenty percent?
Well, I I I said I have a concern with freezing the Assistant Director of Public Services. We should not have directed deal that going home on the weekends to work, no one else does that.
Not true.
And if he, if 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 he's doing this just to keep up with the demand, it's not fair to him. Um um and and it's been on the budget for the last two years, it's cutting it, cutting it, I just would like to see that back on the budget. We'll, we'll go through it and we'll massage whatever it is we need to do, but.
We're here now, this is it.
So, okay, so that, I just, I'm not comfortable with leaving that on the cut. It's the deal that should not be going home on the weekends to work, to be getting ready to come back Monday and then work a full week, I'm sorry. And for us to sit up here knowing it, it's it's uh, it's not good.
Commissioner, I work weekends, I work nights.
That's a lot to put on the.
I got staff that work weekends, take laptops home at work, I'm not saying it's fair to anyone, but I'm just saying a lot of us work weekends and nights. Okay?
He does it on a consistent basis.
As well.
And 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 you say that the last two years, the position wasn't filled, but it wasn't froze, it was just wasn't, it wasn't filled.
That's my understanding.
Okay, and so you're saying that just rolls over into?
Yeah, we're keeping the head count, but we're just not putting the money there. So just say for instance, if throughout the year, we see that we maybe generate some savings and they, and a candidate comes up or they get an idea. Same thing with the customer service specialists, that is definitely needed as well. If something comes up, you know, then we'll come, I'll come back to council and say, I have additional funds, I need to add this to the budget. We now have some excess funds potentially, you know, that we can use.
And if we didn't freeze the position. Where would we get one hundred twenty six thousand from?
That's what I'm saying, we wouldn't have the money to fund it.
We'd have to increase the rate more than the twenty percent that's recommended there. Moving the city engineer to community development, how, does that negatively impact, I mean, it does negatively impact by two hundred thousand dollars?
The general fund.
Correct, so.
We'll talk, that's a down, yeah, that's why this is first.
Understood.
So to go back to the the um Empower report, it's, we did, when we changed the uh the makeup of the fund. We were uh our normal, the fund we had was expected return, ten year return of six point five seven. Um and then the one that we 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 changed to. Uh moved it up to six point seven six, so for the ten year uh Empowers, look forward, look back, whatever they. It came out to six point seven six is their their rate of return is what they're expecting, so. And I can send you that report from Empower.
Which is why you recommended that we start.
Yeah, that's why we wanna get down to six point seven five, absolutely, yeah. Okay, anything else? You wanna take public comment on this one and go to?
I thought we were.
Okay. We're, we had, and we'll do it at the end, but um we'll just do it at the end.
Yeah, so I wanna be clear, so we good, this is, these are the proposed cuts, Commissioner Valesquez has a problem with the freezing. But as I explained, should something come up, this is, this was discussed internally. If they see a a candidate that they think that they can get and like, we'll have to come back and see what we can do in regards to funding.
But there's nothing we can really do there though, right, like there's not a. What can we do? And with the revenue's not there now, it's not gonna be there in six months, so. It, in reality, it, we're gonna be in the same position next year and say, hopefully we can fill this, and we're gonna have to increase. So, I mean, maybe it's worth the conversation of, let's get the Assistant Director position, because again, our line of succession through most of our departments, many of our departments isn't there. If one person leaves, i- it's, we're lost, so. That one helps to solidify departments, make sure that we're strong, and helps a balance within our department. So what is a, instead of twenty percent, twenty one percent or twenty two percent increase to cover that, that variable there? To help balance that, I don't know what the numbers are, I'm sure you don't have them right off the top of your head, but I think, look, that may be a possibility there to cover some of these. I think the the assessment, water plant assessment definitely needs to happen, um. And I definitely think the public director, the Assistant Public Director, needs to happen.
Looks like, if you looked at, I'm going back to this chart here, and this is truly just a guess. Um you see the change between the fifteen percent and the twenty percent, when the subtotal up there that says fees? So we're looking at what, about twenty one point two million difference?
And that's at five percent.
Yeah, the fifteen percent compared to the twenty percent, and you know, math on the top of my. So one point two.
So every percentage points about two hundred and forty thousand. So that would, it'd be a twenty one point five percent increase in utility rate would cover the Assistant Director position as well as the water plant infrastructure assessment. And that's it, I mean it.
If that's the pleasure, I mean, we can look at a twenty five percent and see how many of these things that we can keep. Versus the twenty percent and still versus the forty.
Do we have to do in five percent increments?
No, you can do them in whatever, yeah, I'm just, because I had that five percent incremental change.
Got you. I think it's worth looking at.
So see what percent that we need in order to try to cover some of these critical things like the assessment. Um the a director, freezing the director position, any others?
The infrastructure assessment and then the the asbestos water main, again, I know we have funds there, it's just, that's a health and safety issue that I think should be prioritized.
Okay.
And what is the reducing lower reservoir pump font?
Pumping, the other two hundred thousand for reducing the.
And just to be clear, the water plant infrastructure is only water, it's not, it's it's not the whole entire department, right? Uh this for Dio.
Oh, okay.
Um, the water plant infrastructure assessment is only water, it's not wastewater and it's not.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Just, just the one.
Right.
Water font.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right, and um, Commissioner, in respect to the two hundred thousand of funding there. Um, we have a plan that is, would be bid out shortly. To fix some of the constraint that we found out at the Cleveland site there. That plan is under, is about ninety percent completed. Once that plan is bid out and we and we get a bidder right in, then the construction administration was proposed to be four hundred thousand dollars. Right, to make sure that the pumps and all all those things constructed. I look at that and I just reduce it by two hundred thousand dollars to make this accommodation. So those were, because those money, those funds has to come from four O one. So basically, I can still get that done, right, and once the job is bid out, I can have, and then if I need any fund, it would be roll over over the next fiscal year. So that is the calculation, how I reduce that, two hundred thousand dollars. Because, you know, to put the job out to bid, it even takes about three to six months to wait this going right now. So that's what the calculus of of how that change was made.
I mean, it just, you know, one of the things that 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 happened is. The prior administration, we spent fifteen million on a fertilizer plant we've never used, we spent. We spent four million on the fertilizer plant and eleven million on the west plant, which we've never used. And we spent seven million on uh the lush road plan. So we've, we've wasted twenty two million dollars that could have gone a long way towards some of these infrastructure, and yet, here we are.
Golden Gem Pond would be under this.
Yes.
So let's talk about that then. Uh that's, I mean, so we spent, we allocated nine hundred fifty thousand.
Correct.
For phase one.
Correct.
What?
Is the estimated cost for?
Yeah, are we ever gonna get that pond up and running, I mean, we need ten million bucks, five million bucks?
I know, we're trying to do phase one, Dio, you might as well just, just sit right here until I get off of this slide, okay? Okay, till we get past this slide, just, okay.
Alright, Commissioner, that's the, um, what is the question on that?
So I, we allocated nine hundred fifty thousand, I know they're actively going through uh phase one of what was discussed at the meeting. Uh with some variability, they they change, I guess, and adapt as needed. We're spending, that, correct me if I'm wrong, that pond is gonna need another, how many millions to get up and running? To actually be functional for our residents?
Right, the operation right now, the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you guys put on. Was in order for us to fix the depression or the sinkhole or whatever it is, right? Right now, we are about sixty percent there, right? We are only expending so far three hundred thousand dollars, because we are going slow, we're doing the best we can. I think that nine hundred and fifty thousand would be close for me in order to resolve or to retrofit that sinkhole and information. That is just a guess, so I may not have to come back to you in order to fix that, that's my best guess that I'm doing at this time. Once we correct that, the entire pond, right, has this membrane, you know, has to be fixed. Um if I go back and look at the the history, they spent about one point two million dollars to put in that membrane, right? This cost at this time, I don't know, I have to make an assessment. So the first schematic is to correct the problem that is, that the n- the nature caused. Then to do a proper evaluation and a cost estimate, right? Because remember, in that entire pond, I can solve, is there anything I can salvage, right? Or there is nothing I can salvage, I don't know, I have not performed that assessment, need funding to perform that assessment. But I am just looking at in terms of time, timeframe, right, because it can be a hefty cost. So if I was to provide to you some calculus number for you to think about, I don't know. I think the low should be something like two million dollars, right? And the highest, you know, up to four, four, four million dollars, but at this time, until an evaluation is being done, I will not have that number for you. Because cost is estimated, you know, it seems to go up. So that, right, and that's my best, best guess. And remember, that is only to make that pond, let me make sure clearly, to function, to take reused water.
Right, so that's a good point.
Then you have to put in a pump station in order to make it the the whole circuit work, right? We are in design for that pump station, right, it is about seventy percent done at this time, right? What is that cost for that pump station to be constructed at this time is unknown, right? Previously, what had happened before we went this route, we had a pump station that was designed by in-house staff. And the cost came in to be nineteen million dollars, because it was, so we, we, because of of how the design was done. So we went back to the drawing board and get the expert to do this for us. I am, I do not perceive that that pump station are going to be ninety million dollars, I can tell you that is, yeah, you know, impossible to be.
From your experience, what do you expect a a reasonable pump, not overbuilt, but a- appropriate for that size and to service our residents, what do you expect that to be?
I was assuming, given the price of the market, it's same, this is a guest, we don't hold it, but I think the best estimate I can give you is six point five.
So we're pro- we're at.
And this is not only the pump, this is the distribution system, you know, they have the pump, the filter, everything else.
All of it, the whole system, correct, okay, so we're looking at ten million dollars to get that-ish, plus or minus thirty percent, to get that um. That facility up and running to serve our residents.
Right, it's about eight mi- it's six and two eight, yeah, about eight point five million dollars, so, right?
We don't have that budgeted anywhere or planned anywhere, correct?
No, and the question is that, what I have discussed with the mayor is because um we were going to do this in phases. As soon as the pump station, you know, is designed, we are looking out for grants, because we can apply for those grants. Even for the membrane, once I can get a a good evaluation done, the whole, the whole process is to apply for these grants. To see if there's any grant, can matching grant that we can do this with. But it is not going to be, be a fix for tomorrow, it's going to be a timeframe. But without grants, it would be a tremendous amount of of money to to fix that, so the hope is is to go ahead and to seek our grants to help us out.
Are we considering getting debt to finish this at all, or what does that process look like?
That's also a potential, but we are not there yet until we get a cost estimate, uh or the or evaluation done.
Understood, okay, alright, cause that, I mean, that's a, that's a big um capex that that needs to be finished and. And that's something we get, at least I get a lot of complaints from different residents about water, um pressure and things like that for their irrigation, things like that, and that's where that would be coming handy for our residents. So not having that i- is a big, uh, big problem.
And grants or debt are not guaranteed, so not to mislead anybody.
Yeah.
So they try.
Say that again?
I said grants or debt are not guaranteed, especially when you're dealing with repairs.
So this, there there's an option, an outside option that there, a possibility that this just doesn't get fixed, because we don't have money. There's an outside option.
Your outside option, you end up pulling money from the general fund, at the end of the day, if it's something that comes to this significant and there's this emergency, you have no other resource but to pull from the general fund.
And the, like the asbestos pipe, we had a million dollar grant that was um that we had. Then Congress went back into session and whacked our million dollars, so we had to eat that. We would have, the this first phase would have been covered, most of it by the the grant, but we lost the grant.
Yeah, there's no guarantee.
So we're not, we're not going to do the asbestos.
The the first, the first.
Water main replacement, we're not doing it.
First, first phase we are.
The first phase is my, yeah, that's, yeah, I think they've already started. Yes, I already started.
There'll be, it was.
And the first, and the first phase of that construction work will begin September, I think September the twenty second. I think um we just had a pre-construction meeting, uh we got a schedule, so the first phase of that work, which is. By the Martin High School, right, are going to start, the, well, the contractor is just or ordering to his material. His expected time to begin construction is September the twenty second, I think if I recall.
Do we have an estimate cost for the total amount of asbestos pipes that need to be removed and replaced? Do we have a total cost for that?
There is ten point six mile of asbestos pile, I think, to remove, right? This section that we are doing right now is less than, less than one mile. And the cost is is roughly, I think, um one point four billion dollars.
Wow, and this one is just one mile, the first phase?
Less than one mile, because it's expensive to, it's the material cost, the constructability. You see, the construction, not only you say, okay, go ahead and replace a pipe. You have constraint, you have utilities, you you have construction of 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 traffic control, all those are taken into consideration how these costs are come up. Right, I don't have that number in me, but I know it was bid out, it came to the board, we issued the con- the contract. I think closer to one point two was the construction cost for that.
But D O, the ten miles includes the uh the galvan, the cast iron pipe, not, it's not all, it's not all. Asbestos is more expensive than.
That than the other one, it's two point five, right, but the asbestos pipe is most, is but.
Alright, are we, good, so we can, I I guess then we'll we'll get the C I P, get that to the.
Yeah, I got to compile that information, give me some time, okay? On on that, but again, I want to be clear where we stand right here, you want me to look. At a percentage increase between the twenty and maybe twenty-five. To see, to cover some of the key expenses that you want to keep in here, if I'm understanding correctly, right?
That we need to keep, yeah.
So I I want to make sure I identi- identify those, we're talking about the um. Uh freeze on the assistant director, public um service director. The five hundred thousand for the asbestos pipe, the hundred and fifty thousand for the water plant infrastructure assessment. Any other? Now, I typically don't lobby, but I do want my customer service specialist position with all the growth. I'm not the one to lobby, but I'm lobbying today for my staff.
If you recommend it, then, if it's needed, then let's do it, I mean. They, it's, we can't keep overworking everyone, I mean, that's, it it's, it's killing morale, so, yeah, if you highly recommend it, let's do it then.
So we'll, we'll take a look at those um those items and we'll see what the percentage increase should be to accommodate that. Okay, thank you so much.
We have that before September, Phil?
You're gonna have to, cause I gotta bring it to you on September fourth, sir. I have to bring the proposed rate increase and you have to approve it on September fourth, as well as the tentative budget. Um and the uh mileage rate, at the one thirty meeting is when we talk about the rate increase. Yes, sir. Now we're getting into the fun, I'm gonna make this exciting. The general fund. Original budget was with um the use of reserves was about the ninety-seven, eight, forty-six, hundred and forty-three. And at that time, we estimated the use of reserves, and keep in mind, when I say reserves, these are reserves that we have set aside. Okay, for planned capital use, for one-time use, and we, and our policy allows it, and it's also. The use of reserves that are in excess of the twenty-five percent per our policy, okay? So that's the ninety-seven point nine, and then additional increases to support um. Union negotiations, the one point seven, the mayor um incorp- included that, and then an additional. Recommendation came from Commissioner Smith, and that is additional one point seven for streets. Now, with the list of changes that I'm gonna share with you on the next page. And because of that pension adjustment, you're looking at, we can reduce that use of that excess reserves. I think each of you are familiar with these items that have basically been brought forth for a recommendation of either reduction or addition. Um and I think we've talked through some of them in the past, some of the ones that I think we still need some further discussions on. Um I would start with, let's see, do we wanna talk about the Rotary Membership Mayor, or you good?
Sure, uh no, let's take it out, take mine out, take, take the, the other commissioners out of the. Tiger Bay, that's fine. My personal opinion is I'd wipe out every additional, so if if, yes, my opinion is, we wipe out everything that's. That costs us additional money and we use that money to to fund other, either, either reduce, I'd like to reduce the mileage. But at least not, not go to the higher amount, so.
So would be removing.
Anything that says add. That, that's my.
In other words, what he's saying, I'm gonna go down the list, cause otherwise we'll be confused. Um the Tiger Bay membership, um Commissioner, the last question you asked that I add, you and Commissioner Nesta.
You know, and that was, that was before I found some other stuff on Tiger Bay, because. I understand that Tiger Bay was dissolved, and then it we opened somewhere else and. And this is really a political club, it's a private club. So any of the memberships that are private, should, the city taxpayers shouldn't be paying for anyone's private. Dues or membership, I can see Florida League of Cities, cause that benefits the city, we do attend. Their conferences, uh that I can see, um there were some other things here, but any private. Membership. Should not be paid by any of the taxpayers at all. There was a nonprofit sponsorship. Um and I, I believe that was Commissioner Anderson for a hundred thousand, but we don't have anything in place.
We're gonna, we're gonna get to that down there, let me, that's, we got a few more to, that's, I wanna try to go in order, Commissioner, if you don't mind. Okay, so the thousand dollars, you saying I can take that out, correct? You no longer want me to add that thousand dollars for you and Commissioner Nesta, am I correct?
No, no, you can take that out.
Okay, so I will remove that.
When I, when I asked, you know, when I said that at that time. I was unaware of what the Tiger Club was, and then um in research and then um. Uh a member of the, of our community did send me some information. And uh and it was that the Tiger Club of Central Florida was dissolved, and then it. It started again and. I think it was Orlando, yeah, Orlando, they they started a new one in Orlando. So I, but it's, it's a political club.
Okay, okay.
It's a private club.
Understand, so the cleaning, the fire stations, two services per week, we added at the request of Commissioner Smith at fifty thousand. Dollars, is any discussion on that item?
Is that per week or per month?
Annual.
That's an annual amount, two services per week.
Listen, y'all, y'all do what you want, I, I, I just think when we're raising water rates. Minimum twenty percent, we're, we're raising at least point five mils. I can't justify it once, I mean, obviously, y'all can and and and, you know, I'm just one, one boat up here, but I, I just. I think we've got to be as, i- if it was a need, um I think Commissioner Smith, the first one, which was the roads. Absolutely agree, that's a hundred percent, you know, we had to cut the roads to balance our, our general fund budget, absolutely. But I just think we gotta be. You know, is, is, as frugal as we can in this, this, this economy and, and um this why.
I, I think that's a health issue myself.
Right, uh I mean, we, with, with the fire department, with the fire houses, I should say, the fire stations, um. I mean, we have, we have firefighters sleeping there, um living there. You're keeping it clean and uh aesthetic for them, it's, it's important. I mean, who else would, who else would be doing that? I mean, we have, we have a cleaning crew that comes in for all of us here, right, in the city.
I don't know, my understanding that the firefighters themselves um clean the facilities or wherever they are, out on occasion. And maybe they require additional assistance, um based on your discussions with them, Commissioner.
They, they need, it needs additional assistance. The one about replacing the windows at Fire Station Five.
We, we already got that done in this year's budget.
Oh, we already got that done, oh, okay.
Do you, you want the? Yeah, he can tell you more about it.
Commissioner's Mayor, Will Sanchez, General Fire Chief. We're very thankful of the opportunity, obviously, to showcase as far as our stations and everybody that's come to it. We do take a lot of pride in our stations, we clean them daily, I think the intent and. Really, the belief behind this was for a deeper cleaning. There is no further deep cleansing as far as we went through the COVID period, everybody was aware of that, and we maintained all of our own stations. I think the intent behind this was possibly looking at something quarterly, even annually, a deeper cleaning service. Maybe not so much to this extent where it's twice a week, somebody coming in, cause we do take care of that in-house.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that being removed?
Correct, well, not, he's not saying completely removed, but there needs to be, we, maybe we reduce it to. Once every other week. To your point, maybe doing deeper clean like that.
Well, well, I, what, well, when I saw, when I saw two services per week, that, that wasn't the intent. I, I don't think we need to do it that frequently, but I think it needs to be done at least once a month, that, that. We need to have a, a deep clean to go in there and do things that firefighters.
Some health hazard disinfectants, as far as deeper clean mold stuff, as far as we do a daily cleaning, all of our stations, as far as their shift change, they're checking their trucks. They're also maintaining their stations, I think the intent behind this was actually that deeper cleansing.
Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director, and I can answer this for you, Commissioner, we did in the facilities maintenance budget. Increased a little bit in our janitorial line to do some more of these deep cleanings twice a year at the fire stations, so that's floor cleaning. And some uh deep cleaning on the bathrooms.
So we've already.
So we've got that in our facilities maintenance budget, this was uh to add the cleaning service throughout the year. Like we do at other, our other facilities.
Like you do the other conservator. Alright, let, let's try it, see, see what it looks like. So, so if he has already put that in his budget, then that means we take the whole fifth from here?
Um if that's what you're proposing.
Commissioner's but it's only twice a year though, and I, I feel like that wasn't your sentiment or your, your.
But, yeah, he just said twice a year. I, I got it, he just said twice a year, this is the re- um cleaning that you requested, it is, right now is twice per week. If you wanna cut it in half and do once, one per week, that's, that's twenty-five thousand versus the fifty thousand. I think, Radley, when you and I talked, didn't they have an initial deep cleaning with this fifty thousand? There you go, but it's twice a year.
So we, so we cut this in half and make it twenty-five instead of this here?
Is that the pleasure? Okay. Alright, so that'll go to twenty-five to twice per week, once, once per week, right, sir? Yeah, cut it in half, got it. So the next item, oh, Commissioner Anderson, this is your item that you proposed, the hundred thousand. And nonprofit sponsorship is a program that you wanted to implement.
So I know you asked me to kind of give a detail about kind of what that looked like, so I kind of just made just some quick notes on what my vision for that program was, so. With my background in social services, working in the juvenile sector, working with Department of, um Children's Home Society. And um one of the things, so with the hundred thousand dollars um allocated for uh the not-for-profit organization. Um it was to provide like essential hu- human services to youth and senior citizens, the focus. Is on preventing juvenile delinquency, enhancing the quality of life for seniors living independently. The plan emphasizes on taxpayers funding, funded accountability, and ensures that all participating organizations. Meet minimum capacity requirements, so for example, the target population will be youths, youths between the ages of ten to eighteen. We were focused on at-risk youth to prevent juvenile delinquency, engage in programs that promote positive development, mentorship. Education and recreational um activities, um the senior citizens um ages sixty-five and up. Focus on seniors living independently, provide services that enhance physical health, mental well-being, and social engagement. Um my rationale behind it was, one, the prevention of juvenile delinquency, um the cost effectiveness. Um investing in prevention um programs is most cost-effective. Than dealing with consequences of juvenile delinquency such as increased law enforcement costs, court proceedings, and potential, potential incarceration. Um the long-term impact is early interventions through mentorship, educational support.
I wanted to talk about the summer program, I, it, it didn't get a lot of, of.
But we should let Commissioner Anderson finish her.
Did you finish, did you finish?
So, we have, so the, where was I with that, so the, so that's the cost of thickness, then you have your long-term impact, so early intervention through mentorship. Educational support, recreational programs can redirect youth towards positive outcomes, reducing future delinquency on social services, lowering crimes rates. Then you have your taxpayer benefits, by reducing crime and promoting positive development, these programs help create safer communities, which enhances. Um property values and attracts businesses, ultimately benefiting all residents, okay? And then improving the quality life for senior citizens, so aging in places, supporting seniors to live independently reduces the strain on public health. Services and long-term care facilities, um the social health benefit is programs that offer health screenings, social activities. Transportation services reduce isolation, improve health outcomes, and lower healthcare costs. Um the community engagement, um engaging seniors in community activities, increases their sense of purpose and belongings, contribute to overall community. Um and stability, um the program administration and grant distribution, um the grant um allocation process. So the application period open for sixty days to allow for a maximum participation. Um the requirements will be, the organ- organizations must have be a five oh one C three. Demonstrates a proven track record of serving youth or senior citizens in a pop-up. Additionally, organizes, organizations must meet minimum capacity requirements, including staff qualifications. Financial management capabilities and um operationally sustainable. Um the accountability measures, how are we making sure these programs are effective is, all grant recipients will be required to adhere to strict reporting guidelines. And demonstrate responsible stewardship of taxpayers' dollars, so there's three different grant tiers. So you have your small grants from five thousand to ten thousand dollars for your smaller organization on specific fu- uh project funding. These organizations must demonstrate sufficient organization, organizational capacity to manage and execute the purpose project effectively. Then you have your medium and grants between ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars for organizations looking to expand existing programs or develop new initiatives. Organizations must provide evidence of their capacity to scale operations and handle increased funding responsibility. Then you have your larger grants, which is twenty plus, for organizations with established programs that have demonstrated significant impact and. Um scalability, these organizations must meet higher capacity requirements, including advanced financial management systems, experienced leadership. And a history of successful program execution, I'm almost finished. Uh then your program monitoring evaluation, how are we monitoring the effectiveness of the programs, we have the regular reporting, the funding organization will submit detailed quarterly reports. Outlining program activities, financial, financial expenditures, and measurable outcomes. These reports will be reviewed to ensure they align with the goals of preventing juvenile delinquency and improving seniors' quality of life. Um the site visits and your audits, city representative will conduct regular site visits. And where necessary, financial audits to verify the funds are being used appropriately, and these programs are operating effectively. Any misuse of funds will result in immediate uh correct actions, including the potential withdrawal funding. Um the outcome measurements, success will be measured through participant surveys, reduction in juvenile crime rates, and improvement in seniors' quality of life. Organizing falling through meets, organizations falling through meet, performance benchmarks will be required to implement improvement plans in the risk of losing future. Um funding, and the taxpayer funding accountability, so the minimum investment with a high return, the hundred percent allocation. Represents a small fraction of the city's budget, but has the potential yield of significant long-term benefits, including reduced crime. Lower healthcare costs and improved hu- community well-being and engagement. Um this site oversight to ensure taxpayers' dollars are used effectively, the grant program will include um stringent outcomes. Including regular reporting, site visits, and financial audits, these ensures transparency, accountability, and how public funds are utilized. The public confidence, by holding organizations accountable and requiring them to meet minimum capacity standards. The city ensures that taxpayers' investments are made and organizations capable of delivering measured results. The city ensures that taxpayers' investments are made and organizations capable of delivering measured results. This builds public trust and local government, um demonstrating commitment to um um to financial responsibilities. So in conclusion, allocating a hundred thousand dollars to support not-for-profit organization in Apopka is strategic strategic investment in the city's future by emphasizing taxpayer-funded accountability, ensuring that all organizations meet minimum capacity requirements. The city can be um confidentially invest in programs that address critical social issues, enhance quality of life and create safer, more vibrant communities for all residents. This modest investment, when managed with strict oversight, will have a lasting and positive impact on the well-being of Apopka citizens and overall health of the community. So I did kind of really, because you asked me to kind of write up something.
I appreciate.
Commissioner Anderson, would you be sure to to send that to Susan? Yeah, so we'll have it for the record.
And then uh can you send it, Susan, to each of the commissioners?
You want Radley?
Yeah. One of the programs that that was that it might kind of got glossed over, but I I want to talk about is the next summer next summer's program that we are taking on. So it just so, and I don't remember what the the cost was.
Just to recap, we were uh we're looking at adding two summer uh two athletic sports camps at one at Wheatley Elementary School and one at Apopka Middle School. That'd be for a hundred campers at each uh location, athletics, a full-day sports camp, eight weeks throughout the summer um to provide some more camp opportunities for our residents uh in the area.
And what was the cost of, was it like twenty-five thousand something?
Uh, total cost for each, we're we are right around a hundred four thousand.
How much?
A hundred four thousand for each.
Hundred, you said a hundred and four thousand?
A hundred four thousand for each, yes.
And this is an eight-week camp?
Eight-week camps.
So after that, it it it's over.
It's just for the summer, June, July. Correct.
So my vision is, you know, that there would be actually servicing for a period of a year. So this is just for eight weeks, a hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. This would be a summer camp.
It'll be a summer camp.
Program, yes.
And there are already allows, you know, a lot of free summer camps already throughout the city already.
Uh, there are lots of, there are summer camp programs. Some of the programs we currently run are at capacity with waitlists. So this would help alleviate some of that as well.
And and it's in cooperation with O C P S, and so they're they're getting a a meal. And I know that they're gonna, they're they're excited to help us with, you know, some edu- it's more than just athletics. It's it's educational as well.
Yeah, we talked about a possible educational component.
Yeah.
But the focus is not at at at-risk youth and juvenile delinquency. This is a focus more on prevent prevention, prevention. A lot of times with these programs here, these summer programs, your at-risk youth aren't at these programs. They're somewhere on your corner, they're somewhere getting in trouble. So this is a prevention mechanism that I'm looking to do. In addition to that, the seniors as well.
Okay.
So.
Can I just ask you a couple of quick questions? Is it, do you do you already have a a couple organizations in mind or is this? Because we, and I think you made the point last time, we have so many people that come to us doing so many things, and this is kind of that one fund that we don't have to take from reserves or anything like that. So is that?
That was my my goal, because there's so many different little programs. A lot of people are doing this now with their programs now. But I feel like if we're able to have within the city where they can go straight to the city and they come into, because we we don't have enough money to go around. Um, and I know a lot of programs, I mean, we have someone here um that has a program that can benefit from this as well. So if we can have something that we're constantly funding, where they can come here and say, okay, we know we can get, for example, we can get five thousand dollars um for the year, that's better than five hundred dollars for each of us, and they can do more, and they can have a greater outreach. And then too, when we give them money, there's no accountability. This is accountability. They have to report it. There's there's measures. There's all accountability.
It would be interesting to see if we could create like a policy that does create that those specifically that we all adopt it to say, hey, these are the metrics, very specific, maybe we massage some of it a little, but I could, to your point, it it does, there's a lot of people that do come and we spend it annually, so.
I I just don't want to create a program where it because who's going to manage it? That's the whole thing. Who's going to oversee it? Who's going to manage it? Who's going to be on keeping tabs of it? And a lot of times I find that some of the nonprofits, um when they have the grant, you're talking about administrative costs. So, um, you know, we'd be supporting an administrative cost. Um, so at this time, I just feel the intent is good, but right now in the budget that we have, we're understaffed. So now we have to create a department to oversee a grant program. I don't think we're big enough for that right now.
Or what we can do is instead within a hundred thousand dollars, we can allocate for a contractor to administer that grant. Fifteen thousand dollars, part-time position, and it could be allocated through that hundred thousand dollars, you reduce the hundred thousand dollars. So that way it won't put more strain on staff.
Do we have um Dr. Jackson grant writing? Could she do with, is that a duplicate?
Is the capacity there is what you're asking?
To to be like kind of a grant administrator as well.
I would say yes. I have to be honest.
I just want to make sure, and that's something obviously we're dealing with, is is having uh too many people doing too many jobs, obviously not being compensated appropriately. So just something to think about and and make sure that her her task list is not already full and we're adding to it.
Well, remember she had the youth program and we transferred that over.
So does would she have the capacity, you feel, to administer something so small?
I would say yes. Just being honest.
And that we wouldn't have to create a position this morning.
Not at this time. I'm just being honest. Mayor, whatever you think, yeah. I try not to get, I don't want to get into the politics, but I'm, if you ask me a question, I'm I'm gonna tell you, it's true.
Well, not politics, it's just, yeah, questions.
Well, I like the concept because there are nonprofits that that ask, you know, does the city have grants?
Yeah, we we have a process. Chikinya, I think, being the individual that she is, she loves these types of programs.
And it doesn't have to be a hundred thousand dollars. I just want, it could be fifty thousand dollars, but I think it's important that we have something. And if you're saying that she has the capacity to administer it, I I don't see why, I mean.
Yeah. Didn't we partner with Corstodium, with Rod Love?
Yeah, he he's done a couple of programs for us.
Yeah.
So he currently doesn't.
Duplicating some of those programs.
So he has a program now?
Not now, not now, back in the past.
I guess those programs don't exist anymore, because I'm I'm not familiar with them. I just, I feel like this time with a hundred thousand dollars with, right now, we're going back and forth. Um, that we can kind of park this for a little bit and just go over everything that we are kind of removing.
I think our youth services is so important. Uh, it's I just thought the impact that when they're, we don't have anything to do and we're focused on at-risk youth, we're keeping them, I mean, we're the reduction of crime, then it would it just the impact.
Well, so so let me ask you this, why we just got rid of the summer program then, just took that hundred thousand and rolled that into your program?
But if you guys felt that there was a need already there, we need to serve our youth. I think that's that's the.
We want the summer program.
Yeah, but that's just the summer. I I think I think as long as we have a a structure and a policy that we can all get behind and agree, and there is to to what you um stated, um transparency built in, audits, eh things that we can track of of um who's getting what money, how it's being spent, things like that. And as long as it's benefiting our youth and our senior population, it I don't, people need it now more than ever. So and and if these organizations can stretch these dollars further than we can.
Because a lot of these organizations, they're already in year-round already. So adding to their budget of services they're already creating allows them to service work for you and seniors.
No money will be spent until the program is established.
Anyway.
And approved by this council.
Anyway, yeah.
So.
And create a policy in place. Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think that's. If that's.
Do you think that Chikini can get um some ideas on some what that structure would look like?
Sure. Yeah.
About between now and next.
The next, I'll try. I'll ask her, you know? Hey, we'll see what we can gather the next couple, next couple of weeks is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay, before we finalize the budget, but right now it's it's in as it is until, you know.
Yeah, let's.
Okay, I understand. And then we look at the program and then you, if you don't like it, you don't move forward with it, but the money set aside. Okay.
And it does, I mean, just one last thing. I mean, it does help to empower our seniors and youth, and again, I just to echo exactly what you're you're saying there is that it we're here to support them, and and again, this just goes a long way. So I'm all about empowering our youth and and our seniors, especially now.
We do have a a large program that we do uh uh cater to our senior population.
Which program?
Frank Carlton. We have plenty of programs. In fact, Frank Carlton, uh you know, our staff, the uh our director there, almost all the programs there are geared towards.
Senior related, yeah. So I think those are programs, this is more impacting um at your house, eh at a local, like right at your house. This isn't just events and things like that, at least is my understanding. Again, we can create a policy that kind of um um funnels this into exactly what we're expecting to where it's not just events and things like that, it's impacting directly.
It's just a draft.
Not only that, but there are nonprofit organizations out there that are providing services for both youth and to seniors. But sometimes they are limited as to what they could do because the funding is not available. So if we could provide some additional funding to assist those nonprofits, I think it'd be a plus plus.
But back to the the uh, these aren't just parties, I mean, like the the we got the the Zumba, we have uh the chair exercise.
No, this is.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is Commissioner Nestor was saying that this is parties, it's not parties.
I didn't say party. I said events.
Events, it's not event, it's 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 actual um workouts.
They feed them also, right? Don't they have like?
They do, they do potluck lunches and all kinds of stuff.
This is complimentary to that.
In-home services, making sure that they're, you know, getting transportation to doctor's departments and things like that. So a lot of different services that they currently don't.
We have, we have those resources. We we just need to somehow connect with them. Because we have the Meals on Wheels, we have where they do get transportation. I forget the uh program that you can reach out to and they have that. I know there's those.
And the nonprofits will connect.
Yes, I have nonprofits. I have a a relative that lives in Orlando that has all those resources. Um, so and sometimes it's just partnering with those resources and having them kind of come into the city of Apopka. Because they are all over. I, for me, I right now, at this, at this stage, what we need to do as a city is to address the homeless population, then the ones that are right now in our city. That's where I feel that we need to really address and invest some money.
But this doesn't discriminate against, this is only for youth or only, I think it it opens it up to all nonprofits. And so as long as it's, and again, we can create a policy that makes sure that it states that here's our intentions, here's our expectations, here's where we want, similar to CRA funds or things like that, it's we can di- direct where those funds go. And so especially on the home side, totally agree, or in the unhoused, we can help support those groups that are coming to us individually and and actually formalize the process for them to understand there's going to be funds there. And again, the the, these organizations can make these dollars stretch a lot longer and a lot further than the government can.
And we can add that. This is just uh something she asked me to give an idea and what my vision is. But of course, we all can kind of.
Massage it a little bit.
Little to add.
And and please share that with me as well, so I can get with Chikinya on it and see if she can come up with, you know, what the mayor had um requested.
And I guess let us know too, Dr. Jackson says that this isn't, um, if this is not part of her title and job description, let us know so that we can regroup on our side too. I want to make sure that she's bought into this, because we need a a great administrator that is eh passionate about this. And if she doesn't.
Oh, I, yeah, I believe she will be passionate.
I think so too. I just want to make sure that we're confirming with her as well.
Yeah, I believe. And the finance director will delegate. Okay, so let's go, let's go to the next one. Um, fire department events for new hires and their families, Commissioner Nestor, that was yours for ten thousand dollars.
We can get rid of that one. It's it's, and I'll figure out how to fund this separately.
Okay, um, we're taking two thousand out with Mayor. That was Radley's, so we're taking that out for the cemetery, but we are adding the additional three hundred thousand for cemetery storage. And I think that was yours, Commissioner Nestor, and I thought from conversation with you, is are we good with that or not?
Radley, you wanna?
That's the cemetery?
Yeah, the building.
Additional kind of this cemetery story.
Uh cemetery storage, uh three hundred thousand, we had requested additional funding to finish that building, which we're currently designing. I see add-on here, an additional three hundred thousand.
Well, I don't know if this, and I, we discussed also the Bay Ridge Cemetery. And I know we've already spent some money on that, even though it's not ours, so we then need to decide, are we taking it on to retain it and preserve its history, or are we not going to take that on and let it be overrun and and not preserve it? So that's what these funds were about is is.
The Bay Ridge, yeah, so we're still at the point where we're the the uh owner of the property needs to decide whether they're going to annex into the property. Uh, the communication I've had with the um point of contact listed on the property manager website indicated she is interested in that. I don't have any documents or anything yet to show she has the ownership or title of the of the property. That's kind of the step we're still at. Um, and then she would have to start a process and initiate a process through community development for annexation.
Well, we can get, and maybe this is part of that funding, is either our our attorney or a separate title agent, um a closing agent to start doing a title search, go a hundred years back to ensure that we got clear title, that she is on title and that she has the ability to convey that property.
So we do have a little bit of, I mean, we haven't used all the funds that were allocated this fiscal year for the Bay Ridge. If that's something we you would like us to go forward with, we can try and get those funds. We need to re-budget at least a little bit of funding then.
Okay, and and three hundred thousand is just uh, that's the big wish list of making sure that we can redo fencing and clean it all out and and clean whatever we need. So if if we just want to take this year at a time, and and I think we allocated seventy-five last year?
It was seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, if, and and it's up to the board here, but if we can reduce it to that, just to ensure that this keeps moving forward. Because again, that's all going to be developed here soon. There's a lot of big developments that are planned to wrap around this property and kind of now versus not now. It it's very important that we either do it now or we're not going to be able to do this down the road properly. Things are going to get lost, destroyed, paved over, whatever it may be. And it's important that we either preserve it and we choose to preserve it, or we don't.
Yeah, but I think the sticking point was getting a title for the cemetery.
Well, the the homeowner and landlord would have to initiate the process to annex. The city wouldn't initiate that process.
The landowner is the person that we've been kind of, has been off contact. She's been, she's been taking care of the cemetery.
She's listed as the care of, so we would need to have, there'd need to be some documentation to to prove title of the land.
She she gave us the the right ability to go out and clean it, so we had a crew of what, two, six or eight guys out there?
Yeah, so it's a title, as Commissioner said, a title search would need to be done. Typically, the the person that owns a property would do that. Uh, Commissioner Nestor's uh recommending that the city go ahead and start that process. Well, so there'd be some funds that need to be allocated.
Until she's given us the, she hadn't really said she wants to be in the city yet, has she? I mean, I haven't. She's been kind of non-committal on that, or am I, am I?
I haven't heard from her in a while. I I know our initial talk with her, there was some interest there to potentially do it, but uh we haven't had any documents provided.
Is she waiting for us to do the title for her or her or what?
No, I've, no.
At least advise her that that's where we needed to start was.
Yeah, I've reached out to her. Yeah, I've reached out to her to ask for any documentation or, you know, proof of title, proof of ownership, and then informed her of the process of process of annexing into the city.
Let me just give you a scenario. If she walked away from it and abandoned it, then who would be in charge of that cemetery?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I believe the county might have to step in that one. County or state, I'm not sure. I'd have to, we'd have to get some legal guidance on that. As an abandoned cemetery.
I do think it's important to preserve our history, but again, it's it's the council of if, and again, three hundred thousand is the dream all wish list. So I I think it's worthwhile to allocate some money to continue to maintain it, knowing that it's going to become ours, or hoping or eh helping that that process. It it's a piece of our history, so.
How much would it cost to do a title search?
Uh, I think Jim Hitt before he left said spoke somewhere around like the ten thousand dollar range likely.
For a title search? No.
Fifteen hundred two grand.
Fifteen hundred two, max.
And that'd be included. Titles, insurance as well.
But I'm like, we like, a couple, really about less than five hundred, I mean, yeah, less than five hundred. If that's what we're paying, that's a problem.
Then I I would have no problem with allocating some of the funds.
That title search, to start a search.
So at least we'll know who owns it.
I totally agree, I I'm I'm like that.
So drop it to five?
So we can start the title search.
And we we've been, well, we need to go back out and clean it again, we we, you know, it's it was really good shape. Um now that the uh grapevines are coming back, but um it was in pretty good shape.
It needs it needs maintenance every so often throughout the year to to keep it.
I just saw something on social media where they the Girl Scout troop created a um and they cleaned it up also. They did a cleanup and then they did uh uh some kind of signage identifying the cemetery.
We cleaned it up.
Just recently.
They got a new sign and they put a flagpole there. Which was a nice project, it was a great project, again, to to preserve history.
So we're we're reducing it from three hundred thousand to five thousand?
Correct, just to keep the process going.
Uh so we have money this fiscal year, but as Blanche, I think was indicating to me. We're coming tight up to the end of the year, so we would need to rebudget some money because those funds can't carry for.
Is that gonna be enough for title and cleaning?
That won't be enough for cleaning, but at least let's get the title work started. That may be the dead end there of. Yeah, correct.
So the next item we're removing, I think Riley Diesel, yours, don't go too far, um fifty thousand. Out of your budget for the Northwest Recreation Cemetery Storage Expansion Walkways. Took fifty thousand off of that and three thousand for some workstations. Now the thirty thousand is a separate thing, this is the one that Commissioner Nestor, you requested, he had it combined for new community events, about thirty thousand. And you wanted to just give twelve thousand to each one of those events. Yeah, so it's like an increase of six thousand.
And the 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 Northwest Rec Sidewalk, so. That's where everybody's walking in the dirt, correct?
Correct, we eh if I remember the discussion in the note here, we had uh talked about removing. Or removing that uh expanded capital, hundred thousand dollars and we're eh but putting fifty thousand dollars back into the repair and maintenance. To upkeep the existing.
So we're trying to get and and you, we have applied for a grant to make this an even bigger and better tourism. Uh draw and we're gonna have people walking in dirt.
So uh there are pathways, just as we had talked about, they're a little small. And the grant funding that we applied for did not address any of this inside the existing, it's new add, so. We're working uh I'm working with Parks Maintenance uh about adding some other material, maybe along the side of the sidewalks. And there are some crushed rock uh shells to kind of beautify the look and provide a little bit more pathway while we still have the the concrete. But yeah, the the ask was to try and increase, expand some of the sidewalk sizes.
If no one else is passionate about this, I'm I'll drop it, but I do think it's valuable since it produces income for us.
I mean, I'd rather see you expand the sidewalk opposed to putting down a crushed rock.
Well, yes, there's uh expanding the sidewalks is a per- more permanent solution. The crush rock is more decorative, obviously, people can still walk on it, it's a little bit better surface than.
Are you expanding or are you making it wider, or is it expen?
There's already sidewalks there, we're trying to get wider.
So they're not actually walking on dirt, there's already sidewalks.
There's sidewalks, what's happens is you got such large crowds. If you go look at the sidewalks, you can see on each side the pathways of everybody walking because there's not enough room to walk on the sidewalk, two directions, so. Like I said, in interim, we've uh looked at some options to add some.
But there are a lot of different areas in the city that doesn't have any sidewalks at all, so that was my concern, is that instead of expanding sidewalks that. They're currently there, we should take that those funds and actually places where there's no sidewalks, actually add sidewalks. Instead, that that was my, that was my rationale behind it.
I think that you were concerned about the sidewalks that are in the CRA and we shared with you that we do have um two projects. One, phase one is complete and phase two is underway.
But I have some additional concerns now, so when I received that email from that parent who child was walking in the dirt. Over to off of Pond Can. That was a concern.
So Mayor, and and I think Michael is here, so with the, one of the increases in the mileage rate, we're adding additional funds. Back to the streets budget, um and I know it includes sidewalks, so like I put about a five hundred K, you'll see that probably on the next page.
That Wolf Lake area?
Deals with those, is it just sidewalk repairs, Mike, or?
I think Pond Can, we're 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 moving forward with that now.
So I just want to make sure that the safety of the, that's.
So those type things will be covered under that here. For existing. Not new.
Not new. And there's no sidewalks at all on that, on the Pond Can, where those children are back and forth to school and from school, there's no sidewalks at all. So I I do recommend before we actually fund to widen sidewalks, that we actually safety first with the kids first, that's my recommendation.
That and I think um we can look at some impact fee funds. So that we can deal with, I think we have some funds set aside in there, so just share your concerns.
So is all of Pond Can?
It's not all of it, but it's if you go like to, you know, going towards Zellwood, um it's actually kind of. Went there myself because I was very, very concerned and actually driven the route and there was no sidewalks.
I don't think, like see Pond Can, Pond Can is Orange County, the sidewalks are City of Apopka. And we don't go past Plymouth Sorento, I don't think, the city, because on the left, well, no, we have the one neighborhood. Um the brand new neighborhood behind Zellwood Station that's in the city.
I don't think that's where you're referencing. Yeah.
It's definitely in the city, all that's the city. But we don't maintain those roads, those nothing roads, we don't maintain, that's within the city though, I think those are our sidewalks.
I could ask, yeah, it's it's Orange County, so we have an agreement with them, I'm sorry, Mike Ortiz, Program Supervisor for the Streets. Um we have an agreement with them where we maintain the right of way, but the road itself, Orange County owns it still. So we just have that agreement, so anything that happens in the road like a pothole or anything, Orange County responds to that, anything that happens to the sidewalks, then we respond. And it's true what the mayor said, we stop at a certain limit too, with that agreement with Orange County, and Orange County maintains everything else after that.
So I guess I would want to see, I I I think those are, I think, understand the roads, but the sidewalks, we maintain the maintain the sidewalks, right, we're responsible for it.
Yes, if you're talking about in front of the elementary schools, we do, for Wolf Lake, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, if you continue to, there's no sidewalks.
Going going west.
West, so it's on, it depends on which, so if you're going west.
Past the school.
Past the school, yes, there's no, there's no, there's no sidewalks.
Well, I think that the new subdivision, I'm pretty sure, you know, anybody.
There's, I think there's sidewalks there.
They'll have to put the sidewalks in.
There's a sidewalk.
Yeah, there's sidewalks there.
If you, you know, you keep going up, there's no, there's no sidewalks, I I actually called the parent, I driven, I was there watching the child walk, there's no sidewalks.
I think once you pass, uh I think it's Line Drive.
Line Drive.
Yeah, once you pass Line Drive, there is no more sidewalks after that, but that's where the jurisdiction between us and Orange County, that's when Orange County takes over. And then they own a lot of it.
So we stop there, so we're not responsible.
No, after that, it's all Orange County. I can show you a map if you like.
I just want to make sure, that's very dangerous though. That's Wolf Lake Branch, the new community to the right, that's Wolf Lake Branch.
They'll they'll have to put sidewalk in in front of their.
No, we're gonna continue to go down to those new subdivision, there's no sidewalks down there, but you're saying that's Orange County.
It transfers over to Orange County after that and they maintain.
Even though that's city.
Yes, we, there's, if you look at the map, it's kind of cookie cutter, so there's a lot of areas that Orange County owns and a lot of areas that Apopka owns within the same scope. And that's one of them, Ponkins, one of those roads where Orange County owns a section of it and we maintain a certain section of the.
So can we work with Orange County to make sure that we're?
We can, we can reach out to Orange County.
If you saw what I saw, I was just really, it was just alarming to tho- those kids walking, like it really is a safety issue.
Yeah, like last year when they they built the Kelly Park K eight, we we went all the way from the the trailer park on Kelly Park. All the way to to Jason Dwelling, so we, it was about a, Michael, remember how much, it was like, I almost say four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was about four hundred.
The sidewalk, so that was a, all the way from the trailer park all the way down now, on the other side going west on Kelly Park. It's not there, but that's where the new road, the rocks, I mean, the Kelly Park.
Yeah, the new subdivisions being built, it's true, and it's true what the mayor said, every time a. Every new subdivision, yes.
Yeah, it's 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 kind of like weird because you you take, let's say, the the Welch and Rock Springs Road. East of Rock Springs on Welch is is Orange County, west is Apopka. South on Rock Springs Road, uh south of Welch is Apopka, north of Welch is Orange County. So we have two, two sections of that and they have two sections. But yeah, we'll we'll we need to, we'll get that put together, but yeah, and we have the, you know, we have that little fund just just for for people that don't know. We have a little fund that we get uh money from the signs at the, on the boxes, the telephone boxes at the intersections, not a lot of money. But but well, the first time we did it, you know, we spent the money and we took it from that neighborhood there on Pond Can and and hooked it up to the. You know, the uh where it started, so it, you know, we we spend a little money, it's twenty thousand dollars a year or something like that, but. Doesn't go very far, but you know, it's something.
Yep, so in regards to this fifty thousand, are we good with the reduction?
I I'm I'm suggesting that we keep it and expand the sidewalks, I think that's an investment in a prime. Event spot that we have for our city.
Is that for repairs?
No, that's to expand to make the sidewalks wider.
So it's a hundred thousand, it's fifty thousand.
Fifty to do a different, instead of doing the concrete expansion, you're doing rocks, right?
No, so the discussion was, how we got to here was, we had initially requested a hundred thousand dollars for. Replacing and widening sidewalks at the complex. Discussion came to remove the hundred thousand dollars and add fifty thousand dollars into our repair and maintenance of sidewalks instead in our budget. But it sounds like. The ask now is to go back to a hundred thousand dollars for expanding or go back to fifty thousand dollars for expanding.
How much do you need to properly?
Uh we, so eh we can't do it all at once, so this would this would address one quad of four fields.
At a hundred thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's important, I think the rock is going to be a liability too for some people that.
I don't work in the rock at all.
Well, it's not a, it's a crushed shell, it's a, it's something you'd see on a pathway, a natural pathway. It's not a permanent, we have to maintain it. So an option.
Can wheelchairs and walk and walkers um.
Well, there is a sidewalk there, this would just abut the sidewalk on either side. Again, this is just an option to clean up the appearance and also provide additional walking space other than rutted sand and grass.
How many additional feet on each side would this add?
Uh we were looking at doing, I believe it was four on each side. So we're trying to get, or a little bit less, eh you want to have at least like a ten foot sidewalk.
Absolutely.
Kind of like you install a trail, you want flow both ways if you can.
It's well needed, I think. And it's not going to get smaller, I mean, we're doing more and more tournaments out there and things like that, and obviously that was the goal as well for that grant money is to keep bringing more out there. Again, that's not, not saying this, they're not in the same, but it's to bring more people out there, so.
Right, it's an amenity, eh it's a aesthetic upgrade and it's also a traffic flow function upgrade, so.
Agreed.
So we're keeping this at the hundred, okay, so we're keeping it at? A hundred thousand. A hundred thousand.
And then the the new computer workstations, was that for staff or what was, what's that for?
Yes, I believe so.
Uh that was for some new staff, we can certainly work with that reduction um and and make it work. Without any problems.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we talked about the new community events, and I don't think anyone had any objection to that increasing by six thousand. And then we talk about the award ceremony for reimage community with Orange County Public Schools, Commissioner Nestor.
We did, and it's something that we, you know, that we partner with Orange County Public Schools often, um this may go into. Uh Commissioner Anderson's uh grant proposal, yeah, I think that may kind of encompass.
So we can remove this and incorporate it into that, is what you suggest, okay. So the next one, and and Riley, I hope you're still behind me, this is related to the pool deck. Um upgrades from the two hundred down to seventy-five, and I think he just wanted to start the design only. So he was reducing it by a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so this reduction was to uh look at just the design process in this next fiscal year of. Uh building a new pool and associated structures at Camp Weewah. As the pool that's out there is continually aging and leaking and requires a lot of maintenance, so. This was to get a a plan started uh and worked through uh over the next fiscal year to then have a better engineered estimate on what. A pool cost would look like.
I mean, I guess the the real question comes in, are we willing to, do we want to, do we have an appetite for in improving. A pool at Camp Weewah, putting additional funds into Camp Weewah, I mean, it's going to be a three quarters of a million, if not a million dollar pool.
Correct, so that is the uh the direction we would be looking for is, is there, is there an appetite to. Explore uh a new facility at Camp Weewah or continue move forward with what we have until that becomes untenable?
Yeah, I I would say, we've already, we we sink a lot of money into that annually already, and I think a pool is a little bit superfluous for where we're at right now, but. I'd like if anybody else has anything.
How much income are we generating from Camp Weewah annually?
We don't generate income. Parks typically do not generate income.
They, oh, they don't?
It's a, it's a public.
They're not renting out any of the space or anything, the space?
Yeah, we do generate.
We generate revenue, yes.
When you said income, I go to net, because I know this way is, but we do have revenue coming in to offset some of the costs.
Do you know, do you know how much it is?
We're to like twenty-six percent.
I can get you, get you some of that information because we've gotten those reports before.
We're we're above the average as far as municipalities.
Yeah, uh tip the, eh we'd have to get the numbers uh and and we can send that to you. Um it is generating revenue. Your national average is about twenty-six to twenty-eight percent cost recovery in a park and recreation environment. And we're definitely in that, maybe a little bit above, but we'd have to do that calculation for you.
Substantial continued capex on that park, every single year there's something new that are sizable, correct?
Uh we've had some, we've had some good capex investment in that park, yes.
Right, and I I mean, and adding a pool to that now too, I it, there's not a lot of recovery here.
Yeah, it goes back to what the vision of the board is for that property, uh the pool is a highlight of the property for the programming and for the retreats. Um so again, this would be uh to help start design a plan for a replacement that could, if we. If the board does not want to fund that immediately, we still have an idea of what that could look like uh to to pull in for a future year. The pool is an asset, a a a very valuable asset of that property.
Will we generate more revenue for upgrading the pool, will we have more?
We could have some more opportunity for expanded, it's not really a recreation pool, there's no zero depth entry, it's a five foot maximum. Or the five foot's as shallow as it gets, so it's, it's not a traditional rec pool, it's for lap swimming and it's a camp pool. So you you do camp activities, we do, we have a rock wall. No, it's part of the uh use agreement we have.
So like we use their their gyms in the summer, that's, so the deal we've got for the summer camp next year is that they give us access to the two gyms and.
It's a good exchange.
Yeah, yeah.
But I I I would be in favor of the new pool, I I I think that we need a pool and when we look at. Child drowning, kid drownings, um and we don't have a pool in Apopka.
Didn't we partner with a program that, the British Pool, British Swim School?
That one, we also got Liv Fabri, which is a, is one of our uh police officers.
Which I know our staff, I I know our staff and fire department staff and police department are working on the next version of that program. Coming up soon, so. Um i- if you like, I mean, again, this was uh reduced down to funding for a design process. If you would like, we can tighten that scope up and and start with fifty thousand dollars on design or. You know, if we're looking to to pinch some pinch some savings there, we can go with a smaller start on that process to to start it. And then go from there if you'd like.
I mean, what if we not just say no, but just push this till next year? We've spent a lot of money on that park, a substantial amount of money, and there's no set plan or um. Scope of our goals for that park at all. We've we've never defined that, and I think that's why it's losing half a million dollars a year, so costing half a million dollars a year. After already spending eight million dollars on it, five million to buy it and another couple million on required improvement, so. It has a pool, it does function, yes, I'm sure it needs repairs like every pool. Um we. That park, there's not a set plan for that and that's clear. So I I'm spending seven, five thousand dollars on that.
How many, how many kids do we have there this summer?
Uh we hosted, I think it was like a hundred and ten each week for day camp. Um we do have retreats, we uh it's. We have activity throughout the year. Um if, again, it's a pleasure to board, if you'd like to push it a year. The pool is functioning, it's just aging and it, there's a lot of repairs needed.
If we want to make the comparison, let's look at the community center. It's it's no, it's hemorrhaging money as well, I mean.
How much money does that lose?
Well, we spent a hundred thousand on air conditioners, we spent a hundred thousand on A V, we spent.
That's not losing money, that's capex. There's a difference.
Well, putting a new pool in, but and we've spent, oh, what else have we, well, we got new floors, new lights. Um but, I mean, it's it's for, and the operating costs are, you know.
Well, and 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 in the defense of why we spend that kind of money. We just took over the Apopka Community Center. Um for years, we were not. We were just maintaining it clean, but we were not investing in it because it was being operated by a nonprofit. Um as of August first, we just took over the Apopka Community Center. So now we have full control of it, so the investment that we make on it. It it will, it is a a center that does get rented often. And uh we have a lot of events at the at the Apopka Community Center, so I. I won't compare it to Camp Weewah to, cause it serves to, it's two different venues, two completely different venues. We invested um a lot of funds into renovating Fran Carlton. And it's, it's always busy, almost for all the seniors all the time, so. I won't compare Camp Weewah to Apopka, cause we just took it over. We've been peace, doing little things to kind of upgrade it. But now that we have full control of it, um I think you will see a string of revenue come through it. But before it was run, for years, it was, it was being operated.
Well, since its inception, they, it was built with V F W money as well, I mean, they, they.
It was not, no, it was.
They put some money into it. They did put money into it.
But.
I would like to see you do designs, I would like to see a new pool. Uh I think by having a new pool, it's, then it's gonna be kid friendly. They will have that shallow area where it's not starting at five feet for a kid that cannot swim. And and it would be a great amenity to that, to that camp.
So what, what's the pleasure?
Well, if we're gonna, I guess, let me ask the design plan itself, you guys already have a, somebody has a thought in mind of what this looks like. I don't know what it looks like, we haven't seen that, so I'd like to see, do we, can we get a Air Bones, Love It, absolute best pool we could ever have? And what those prices are, what what's?
Yeah, so we, we just, we don't have a a true design in in mind. What I have are components of a pool. That I think would fit at Camp Weewah, out of the use that we try and get out of it. So we try and use it for a camp program. It's built right now with some lane lines and a very deep end. Uh it doesn't have the zero depth entry, it doesn't have a shallow end. So for the younger kids, that's a challenge. So a lot of recreation pools have that zero depth entry, they have shallow ends. For the traditional just swimming, just play. Um it gets utilized for uh lap uh for swimming teams. Um uh it can be expanded into lap lanes in the mornings, those type of things. Um so there's that component as well, your competitive swimming, your um exercise swimming. Um so those are a couple areas that uh we have a pool that's aging that if we were gonna start over. We want to incorporate that into into a nicer uh pool.
And have been helped is express some interest, but they, the pool we have doesn't meet their needs for seniors and.
It it's a challenge, again, it's a challenge because of the, it's, it was made for for the Y M C A camp. It's got, it's an old school traditional camp pool. You got lap lanes and a deep end. That's kind of how they were made. Again, a recreation pool is is built a little bit different. If we're gonna put a pool in, Camp Weewah would be my recommended location because it brings a great asset to the camp programming. And the the rental retreats that come out, rather than offsite at a different location.
Do you have an example pool anywhere that you're trying to duplicate?
Um, I mean, there's uh, there's a couple, uh the city of Oviedo has a aquatic facility that has like a play structure in it. It's got some swimming areas. Uh. Really, that would be kind of where I'd be looking at, something that had some recreational elements for the programming and the retreats. But also some opportunity for exercise, swim teams, people that just want to do lap lanes. Uh to provide those type of, that type of facility as well.
So I think it's important to identify exactly what it is that we want to see before we actually.
And that's, the design process would start that, and then from there.
But we have to give some direction, right, with the design process, what what we want to.
Right, we would have to give them, we had to give them some of those details, what we're looking for, and then they would start pulling the information. Uh similar facilities or similar amenities. And that's how that would start. And then from there, they'd start building some ideas on what that could look like, some options. Uh some locations on the property that would be a better fit possibly for the, for a pool like that. So that's really the, to kick off, that would be, we haven't started any of that yet. Other than just internal discussions with my staff and and kind of what we've seen utilized out of the pool and what we could utilize additionally further out of the pool.
So we kind of. What looks, what is seventy-five, seventy-five?
I, you know, I I I will say this, cause I I did support our mayor when we purchased that Camp Weewah. But at the time, I thought, and I I still support it, cause I think it's a beautiful park, I think it's a great amenity. For our city, but at that time, I always thought that we would have partners with us. To kind of help run that Camp Weewah. And it seems like we're the only ones managing and operating that that park, and it is costing. The taxpayers a lot of uh uh money each year. We we keep investing more and more into it. Um. So.
Well, we do have a partnership, or we have a contract uh uh partnership for like the swim lessons and and currently out there. So we do have some swim lessons that happen out there outside of the summer program. And again, we we do have many retreats that come out, rentals that come out on the weekends when we're not in season, camp season.
And the pool is the attraction for Camp Weewah.
The the retreats want to use the pool, so the rent pool will provide lifeguards and they'll come out.
That we need it for the campers for the summer swim lessons. So. What if we designated seventy-five thousand to get a design, because it's just the design. And then that's not even the investment, when we say let's renovate the pool.
Yeah, that was, that's the request, that's where we're at right now with the request, is to drop it from that initial amount to seventy-five thousand to start a design process. And try and get some ideas on what direction is the best direction for a new pool at that facility.
Okay.
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 So add that one, I guess.
Okay, so that's seventy-five.
Yes, that is taking the two hundred minus the one twenty-five, that's why you see the negative one hun- hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the next item is Main Street Apopka, Commissioner Nesta, this was your request to provide fifty thousand dollars. To Main Street Apopka.
Um, yeah, all right, I I know I have someone here from Main Street Apopka. And the one thing that has been stressed, um and I've gotten a few phone calls. And of course, we've gotten several emails supporting it, we support it, what's important is. The designation of the five oh one C three. Um where are we with that?
Caitlin Keshade of Main Street Apopka, so the short answer is we don't have it yet. The long answer is the I R S is processing applications that came in in December, right now of twenty twenty-three. And we submitted ours in the very first week of January, so we're getting very close. The I R S updates on the first and the fifteenth of every month, uh with where they're at with those applications. So we should be seeing it any day now.
That's, and that's the only thing, is that we've gotten, I've gotten plenty of emails and and um. I've gotten a lot of support from our community, I will have to say that. Um and I'm certainly in support of it, I think it's something that we need. Um we work, you know, we're creating the Fifth Street Promenade there, so this will be a benefit. I just want you to know that that was a a concern by some of the residents.
It's one of ours too. We we definitely, we understand that we need it, we want it. Uh we are registered with the state as a nonprofit organization, just as it is, um and everything. All of the donations that have come in so far will be able, you know, people will still be able to get their tax write-offs once we have that certificate. Uh because it goes back to when you filed, not when you receive the certificate. So as soon as we get the physical copy, it'll be dated for, I believe it was January sixth when we submitted it. Um and then everything will kind of fall into place. I do anticipate having that designation by October first.
Okay.
Uh for some, some reason, I thought that we had set fifty thousand dollars of that coronavirus money aside for Main Street, no?
No, no, we we allocated basically all of that.
Well, I think it's important to li- to to echo the same thing is that, just because we're allocating the funds, we're not dispersing it yet until. Remember, we have agreement in place that we all agree to, and then two, that um that they receive their designation as well. So make sure that that's clear.
So we don't see any duplication of efforts between the C R A and and Main Street, or or is that?
No.
Because, what's the C R A done in the last five years?
I don't see a duplication with C R A, I, I mean, I've been, we've been sitting as a board as a C R A and it. Hasn't had, it hasn't presented anything comparing to what Main Street has been offering, so I I see two different.
So, I just have a question, so is fifty thousand dollars a one-time contribution, or is is it a continued contribution every year?
My understanding, this is a one-time, at this time.
And 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 I'm gonna say that when when I met with them initially, uh they set this up, and and that was one of the questions I asked, and it was my understanding. They was gonna work in conjunction with the C R A, and it was gonna be something that they could complement each other, so not that it's gonna duplication.
It's not a duplication, cause I mean, we've been sitting as a C R A, and I don't feel like we've addressed. What Main Street is trying to bring to uh downtown, I just feel it's too different, but working together. Is, you know, uh rebuilding the C R A area with residential foot traffic, some retail. And Main Street is about um bringing in more businesses and sort of uh events. And I I just feel it's too different. I mean, we we took a tour of the land and saw their Main Street and we sat with their. Um elected officials and we sat with all the businesses, and I mean, it's just too different. And that is, and they have a C R A there, um so.
Okay.
So I I saw this also to designate the fifty thousand for Main Street.
So we're keeping the fifty thousand in?
Yes.
Correct.
Mayor?
I guess.
Okay, try to get the response from Mayor Bobby.
It's majority, yes.
Okay.
That's what I just said.
All right, and Commissioner Smith, I think you were referring to the twenty-five thousand. That came out of the coronavirus funding for, was it reimagine, reimagine something?
Reimagine communities.
Reimagine communities, if that's, if that's the case, that's what I recall. All right, now, a hundred and nine, seven oh five, we're um eliminating the transportation coordinator position.
Who's gonna be doing those efforts then?
Yeah, that was, wasn't that our senior uh?
That was Pam's position, yes.
Pam Richmond?
Yes, ma'am. So mayor?
Well, we're just, we're we're looking to hire the community development director. We thought we had somebody that that would have fit perfectly and be able to do a lot of those projects. And it didn't work out, so we're still looking for a C R A, I mean, excuse me, a community development director that. Hopefully has transportation experience that could help in that that area, though.
But but this is Pam's full-time position.
Yep, I I I got it.
And and I think she was doing a fabulous job at what she did, I mean, she was on the ground and she's made a a lot of. Advancements and and I said it. I mean, when I first came aboard and asked her about full lane in Okua Popka Road, I mean, she jumped on that and, I mean. So I think that's a very vital position.
So do I. So we keep it. Uh because it, when she exited our city. You gave, if I'm not mistaken, that got. We allocated to another staff member, which was our engineer.
Well, it's a little bit of both, it's Jean Sanchez taking on some of the responsibility and and Richard or some, so.
But Jean Sanchez, her job, I mean, her job title is.
Planner.
Um transportation is completely a different element. Um I I would like to see a transportation person.
Okay.
Expert come, be hired.
It's definitely needed for our growing city and and having the infrastructure, structure issues we do have. That's desperately needed.
Mm-hmm, I agree. I I, transportation, I'm in support of the transportation coordinator as well.
Okay, we we leave that in. Now, we're adding this position, um this is a person that assists Richard, so we we definitely need this. Um position to be added.
Right, because Richard's been doing this on his own, he's been the only engineer in the city.
Yeah, this is like a an administrative specialist, so, yeah, this is admin, that kind of helps him out.
Yeah, I think that's.
Right, yeah.
See, he he does all the administrative and.
Well, he got a little help, but this one here, we we're gonna make sure to get funded, so we can continue that, okay?
That's good.
All right, so and then, um as I spoke with you earlier, this is the, when we were talking about Fund Four Oh One. We're transferring Richard's position to community development as well, okay?
Transferring it to where?
General Fund.
Right, up to community development. That's where it used to be, you know, his office was up on second floor here. And most of his work is, is, you know, we're trying to make sure that the people we have are allocated to their their role in the city government. And so I, you know, was asking with Theo and Richard, hey, what what percentage of of his, you know. Position is is community development on the front end of developments, and so we just came up with a ninety percent number. That's kind of how we got to that. That, okay.
So he'll report to the community development director?
I don't think it's changing the reporting structure, it's just how it's being paid.
Yeah.
So you, will you be transferring to be in this building? And say, oh, we used to remain in Cleveland.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's just functionality.
So businesses need to move money around.
Okay.
Correct, we just need to move money around. This isn't really anything to do with, it's, it's just moving money around to make the balance.
Honestly, I think it's a combination of both, as I understand, no, to be honest with you. So, and then, talking about money, I looked at some of the revenues and I kind of trued up some, got some additional revenue. Um, that's about a hundred and seventeen thousand eight eight five, so I'm factoring that in here as well. And the next item is the pension item that we discussed, and, and the impact on the general fund is the million dollars with, instead of factoring this, um, six point seven five and factoring the seven, so we got a savings there of a million dollars.
But if we go down to the s- the six point nine five, it'll be?
Yeah, but I, I gotta get that calculation, it'll be a little bit, not much. I don't, yeah, when, when, when the pension board votes on it, and when they say it's gonna be implemented, then we'll factor it, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And what we're backing out here, we did incorporate like an additional, because we didn't know how the union negotiations was gonna fall out, so we did incorporate an additional five percent on that, so we're backing that out because we do have adequate funds with the millage increase and the additional two hundred and eighty-nine thousand that you wanted to add to bring that to about two million dollars, factored in this budget to assist with the union negotiations.
Do we have the total union contract cost at this point?
I do not have it, I had an estimate, but I don't have that information in hand.
When, I mean, I guess it, it was recent, so when do we expect to be able to know what that number is?
I did talk to Joe Patton, our HR Director, and he said, I think he was finalizing something, and he's at a conference right now, so I think that he and I will probably get together next week sometime.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, leaving that two eighty-nine down there, brings it to the two million dollars. So, and another initiative, I'm going back up, I apologize, for the police, a thousand dollar increase, the mayor wanted to add that for Lieutenant Down, so that's about a hundred and forty-three thousand.
Wait a minute, so adding a thousand dollars where?
Lieutenants on down. All of the personnel from the lieutenant level on down.
What are we doing, what, what are we doing, I'm sorry?
He wanted to give them a thousand dollar increase, right, Mayor?
A one-time bonus?
Eh, no, no, this adds to their base.
Their base.
Yes.
It adds to their, I'm sorry.
And so this, this is in addition to what police had already requested?
Yes.
To complete their budget and to be competitive?
Well, we've got.
Well, competitive at that point in time, I think there's some, the chief's gonna come up.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, um, during my presentation, I did tell you, and I think I've personally told each one of you, that we're gonna be chasing salaries again this year. Uh, the Winter Garden Police Department just opened their contract and are giving their police officers a twenty percent raise, that's putting them at sixty-four thousand dollars on a twenty-one eighty-four, um, work year, we're at sixty-two. Um, we went from the top, when I did my presentation, to now fourth in the county already, and that's gonna continue to, um, hurt us. Um, when we made it to the top, I think I told you all during my presentation, we had ninety-plus applications. Um, unfortunately, some of those, a lot of those aren't qualified, or we're not gonna take, uh, we, uh, processed fourteen last Friday, and only four of them have made it so far through the process, so we lost ten right there in one night. Um, I mentioned that we're gonna chase salaries and it's just a matter of when we wanna address it.
But is, is a thousand dollars that make or break, I guess, that, we're still fourth, which isn't the worst, and?
On October first, OPD is gonna be at sixty-four, we're at sixty-two, so it puts us at sixty-three.
So we're still in fourth, though?
Uh, we're, if we put, if we go to sixty-three, yeah, we're still gonna be close to fourth, but we're at least still in an argument with, with them, I, you know, I, I get that we're not going to, you know, be above Orange County and OPD, we don't have their budgets, we don't have, uh, the resources that they have to be competitive, and their recruiting and everything else. Although I think we're doing really well now, we've sworn in quite a few police officers lately, we got, um, it looks like seven now going into the September Academy. Uh, we got one graduating from the Seminole Academy on September eleventh, uh, and I think three in the, um, Valencia Academy now. So we're making progress, but we're gonna start falling behind again. Uh, Winter Garden is extremely far behind, their starting pay right now is at fifty-three, uh, so they decided they were gonna give all their city employees a five percent raise and the police officers an additional fifteen percent to get them to sixty-four thousand, uh, which is gonna be competitive with, uh, OPD, Sheriff Mina's gone to the county and asked for thirteen million dollars to get their salaries up to sixty-five.
So this a hundred and forty-three thousand is only salary, this isn't benefits that are now gonna be increased as well?
Yeah, I can't answer that question, I don't know where she got the number from.
Yeah, I, we have a hundred and fourteen, um, based on payroll, and it does have a little benefit factor, the same factors we did for the, um, salary study, for pension, um, social security and insurance. It's an estimate.
Yeah.
I mean, but it, 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 the fact that it's, we're still in fourth, though, I, I understand what you're saying, that it, it, it's more, we're still in the same position, though, so that, that, that argument is still, we're, we're still fourth, so this doesn't move the needle in a huge way, and?
Well, I'm not gonna tell you that if you wanna go to sixty-four, I'm gonna tell you no.
Understand that.
I'm just trying to keep us as competitive as we can be, and, you know, OPD and Orange County are both in contract negotiations, so I don't know what their contracts are gonna look like over the next couple of years. Unfortunately, a lot of the cities, Okoye opened up their contract last year to give their officers a raise, OPD's opened their contract twice this year, once, uh, a couple of months ago, and then October first, they're opening it again to get them to the sixty-four with an overall ten percent raise. And then Winter Gardens opened their contract to go to, um, sixty-four and give their officers a twenty percent raise effective October first. Uh, to be honest with you, I was a little shocked, I called their chief yesterday to confirm that that was correct. And he did confirm that that is where they're going to, because last time I talked to him, he wasn't sure they were getting raises at all, and then all of a sudden, they're past us.
How much did we, we were, we increased them this year, correct, already in your budget that you presented?
No, I did not ask for a budget increase, I thought that we could make it a little bit longer, and I, I think during my present presentation, if you remember, I said, I'm probably gonna be back up here, I thought we were fine at the time, because we were number one when I did my budget presentation. Now we've gone backwards, and I think we're gonna continue to go backwards once Orange County, we're still ahead of Orange County right now, but with, you know, Mina seeking the funds, I think he's gonna get them because we all have to be competitive, and, you know, he's over two hundred, uh, deputies down. Uh, OPD's fifty, I think, in the police department, and somewhere around a hundred at the airport. Um, we're gonna be twenty-two down approximately come, um, October first. I don't remember where Winter Garden was, but they were considerably, I, I, don't quote me on this, but I think it was like eighteen, but they're only an authorized agency of eighty-nine people. Uh, but I think you, if you look at it, the percentages of vacancies among the agencies is about consistent. You know, we're all about whatever that percentage is, I was gonna do it, but I forgot to do it, I apologize. Um, as far as the number of vacancies we have versus our authorized numbers. Um, so the pool's small, you've been to the graduations, you see that, you know, OPD and Orange County with their salaries and and other opportunities that they have there, they're graduating fifteen, twenty people in these academies, and we're graduating three. Uh, sometimes one, you know, I'll be happy next March when we're ac- actually able to swear in seven of the academy. It, it's a struggle, and I, I don't know that, you know, the kids are chasing the dollar.
No, I understand, absolutely, I, thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Sherman, do you know where currently the fire department, what's their starting pay? And then, where did we just finish that? Mr. Smith, you may be able to answer that, I don't know if you know that off the top of your?
Will, Will.
Yeah, Will's here, I think it was right around sixty-two, wasn't it, Will?
Our current starting pay right now is at forty-six six, with the ratification of the contract, it will bring us up to fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Wow.
But, but that's, that doesn't include, whereas the police, they don't get any, they got a few little incentive pays, but, but like paramedic pays?
Correct, so paramedic pay would be at four dollars an hour, uh, we'll.
What's that annualized to?
Eleven thousand six hundred.
Yeah, so we're still at sixty-one thousand, though?
So we still at sixty-one.
That's for a paramedic EMT, if they're a field training officer, they'll receive an additional seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, for an instructor certifications, another seven hundred and fifty dollars, and inspector certifications, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And that's the stuff we just agreed to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, you asked, I thought you were asking about this year, meaning FY twenty-four for increase for PD? Because they did get the salary adjustment and additional increase?
That was October first.
Yeah, I, I wanna make sure I didn't misunderstand your.
Yeah, we wanna be, make sure we answer.
We did have an adjustment starting last October, uh, October of twenty-three, in salaries to be competitive. And then there was a, a slight adjustment during the pay study, so if you're talking about this fiscal year, I, I apologize, I misunderstood you, and I thought you asking about what I asked for in my budget, I did not ask for any salary increases in FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Okay.
So, I, I just wanna make sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So are we good on this items?
I think it's important that we definitely remain competitive, so I actually am in favor of the, um, of the thousand dollars.
Thank you. No, you can't sit down, he's trying to sit down, no, you can't.
All right, um, let's see. All right, keep going, let's go.
Okay, we're gonna move on, I think we're almost there, we have one thing, the nine thousand, for the Facebook boost.
It's just marketing our own events to make sure they're as successful as possible, it's.
I think Rob was good with it.
Yeah, and I, if we, it's not, I'm, I'm, I'm not sold on it, I'm not gonna die on that hill, it's just to, to make successful arguments that we're spending money on.
So you wanna keep it or take it out?
Can we just get, Bradley, could you get us, uh, for the events, kind of what we're spending?
I think you budgeted twelve hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken, on Facebook, at least.
And get with, and then maybe get with Kelly, how many impressions, it'd be nice just to have a, kind of what it, what that?
So I can have a good tentative budget? Can you, can you, do you wanna keep it in or take it out?
Nine thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I, I would, um, take it out for now, it's nine thousand dollars, it's.
Yeah, I'm not sold on this one, that's fine, excuse me.
Can we reduce it?
Yeah, I mean, what about forty-five, forty-five hundred or four thousand, five thousand, just to, again, I think increasing our marketing for our events, it only makes it better, helps vendors that are out there, it, it's more than just Facebook marketing, it, it helps promote.
Is everyone good with forty-five, Mayor?
Okay, forty-five.
Yeah, I mean, because we do have a digital, I guess you wanna call it media. Um, because we do have, uh, uh, what is it, the Apopka Voice, and you can advertise with him, I wouldn't know what that cost would be, I mean, he he's very, um, very, he's very, you can see.
Not necessarily, I'm, I'm saying more just our, our page, you pay for, um, promoting, basically, our sponsored, city-sponsored page would just be promoted, and it gets, starts to get an algorithm, things like that, it's well beyond my understanding.
And this, and this is an item, Mayor, that's in Rob's budget, that he was trying to increase. Okay, so we down to forty-five, thank you so much, and that completes the list, we have the items notated, so, you know, and, and just keep in mind, as I go forward, I'll explain to you how these may impact our decisions going forward. So just to share with you the impact, um, on the streets budget, um, with that transfer, we increase in that transfer from general fund from the three point four fifty with an additional one point seven million with that, um, millage rate increase totaling four point nine or, uh, five million dollars. And that would allow us to put five hundred thousand back in the, uh, main, maintenance of sidewalks and curb repairs. The paving and resurfacing program, another one point two, making that a total around about one point seven in that, and in regards to their pension allocation, I just, you know, added that to the paving and resurfacing program as well. Okay, so those are the changes there, any questions in regards to the streets budget? Okay, so now we go into the proposed tentative millage rate. At the July seventeenth meeting, we set the rate at four point eight three, and we required a unanimous vote, and we did get a unanimous vote. Um, before you, we have the one point seven for union negotiations, an additional one point seven right now for the transfer to the streets fund, so the millage rate at this point is about four point six eight seven six, and that will require a unanimous vote.
Okay, so we can, we can balance the budget with the point five, or we have to go to the point?
No, we can go with the point five, based on the point five is how we factored here.
Okay.
Okay, and using less out of those excess reserves.
That, everybody good with that?
So when I come forth, I'll bring the four point six eight seven six as a tentative millage rate to be advertised, that requires a unanimous vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
On, on the fourth, I will bring forth the four point six eight seven six, I'll be proposing that as the tentative millage rate, and it will require a unanimous vote of approval. Are we good? Thank you. I think I got some goods, okay.
So we started at four point eight three nine nine, and we are going?
No, ma'am, we set it at four point eight three nine nine, right, but every budget we've talked about has been about the four, we started out at the four point four three seven six, Commissioner Smith recommended that we increase it another point two five to, uh, add additional funds to the streets budget. So that's, that brought us to the four point six eight seven six. Other discussions took place, and so it was recommended that you go a little higher, just in case we need to add some additional expenses. We no longer need to add those additional expenses, like the forensic audit and all of those other items, so we're back down to the four point six eight seven six. Okay? So we're good there, I wanna give you some highlights, I think all of you actually have seen this, so this will not take long on the CRA budget. It was approved by the CRA, um, council, um, a board. Um, and, and basically, it included their carryover, or estimate of their carryover of about three million, twenty-one thousand eight twenty-eight. And, um, Bobby Howe went over that in detail with each of you, it's basically, we're projects that did not get started and probably won't get started in this fiscal year, that we're gonna roll over to the next year, which is Park Avenue, the City Hall, City Hall Downtown Park, Neighborhood Park at Eighth Street and Fifth and Highland, South Highland Avenue.
Bradley, can you come down and just?
You still wanna?
Well, just to kind of talk about the timing on these, the, the big ticket items.
Well, I think he's on the next one on the trail.
Well, all of them.
You wanna go over all of them?
Well, the ones that he's, yeah.
Okay, so the downtown Apopka Trail, it, we're just rolling over that too, and Bradley's gonna come and talk down, talk about that, and the cement downtown Apopka Trail enhancement of fifty thousand dollars, that's where the three million is coming from, Bradley?
You, you're the MVP for.
Good evening again, uh, the downtown Apopka Trail will start there, the, uh, that was at the last council meeting, uh, the contract was brought forth for approval. So as soon as we get the contract finalized with the, uh, vendor, we will have a kickoff meeting and get that project scheduled, uh, for construction. Uh, the Apopka, or the skate park pump track, um, we are about very close to final design after some final tweaks we had to do on it. Um, the tentative plan for that is a construction towards the end of this year and the first part of next year. Um, the Eighth and Highland Park, uh, Public Services has finished the, uh, piping project or the, uh, uh, stormwater project on that property, uh, Community Development is working on finalizing the plats of that property into the four individual plat, uh, four individual properties, and then the park property. I'll be working with our, uh, one of our playground contractors to get a playground structure, start the process of selecting a playground structure and some playground amenities for that park, and as soon as the plat is finished, we can hopefully finalize those plans and get construction, uh, scheduled for early next year. Uh, and then City Hall Park, uh, we have the initial benches and, uh, picnic tables ordered, uh, those should be arriving hopefully within the next month or so. Uh, and we'll be doing that design, uh, construction in-house with our Parks Maintenance Team.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So, no, I, I, that was just, any questions?
Right.
That was it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Blanks, great job, I know we, we put you through the wringer.
You did great.
I flashes it on.
All right, public comment, if I'd like to speak, oh, man, Albert McKim, come on down.
Yeah. Can, can, I'm sorry, Chair, can we take a two-minute break?
Sure.
We have to go to the ladies room.
Thank you.
How many people we have, how many people do we have? Let's call us, speak. One, two, three, yeah. Only got, only got three, but.
Only three?
Yeah. Can you hang in there?
I can hold it.
Can you hold it, we got just three, cash your last gas?
Okay, we can, we can. Is Mr. McKim ready, ready? Oh, baby. Does she just give me this?
Um, so, no, she just.
So. Okay. No, we're not gonna take a break. We're not taking a break.
No, we're not, we're gonna wait.
Yeah, we just, we just got three, so we'll knock them out.
There are several things that I want to cover, one is that the clubs need to be removed, I know that, um, some of the commissioners do not have their, they pay their clubs privately. And, um, then two, uh, you can, the Orlando Development Partnership can be reduced because it's not been used effectively in the past, uh, at seventy five hundred dollars. All the whole city staff and the com, uh, commissioners could have been attending, and they were not. Um, in fact, the, uh, person who called me from the Orlando Development Partnership didn't even know that Apo, Apo, the City of Apopka was a member. Um, and up to twenty people could attend the Citrus Club event. And so all the commissioners could have been attending the Citrus Club event every year. And I'm sure Susan would have loved to have gone to that too, probably. Um, Metro Plan is not a membership, um, it's an organization of operate, of, uh, for operating costs for the Metro Plan. I don't understand why it's under membership. You're a member of it, but that's, uh, a whole lot of money. The Chamber is intrinsically linked to the, um. Uh, when Nelson was a fault, uh, falsely closed and reopened the Tiger Bay Club, the Tiger Bay Club that was here in Apo, in Apopka up until last year was at, um. Nelson's, listed as an address at Nelson's office, and then they closed it one day, three, um, eight, and then the very next morning was reopened. At his friend's location, um, out on the, the East Coast. And then that's the same man who is now the president of the Chamber. And that man is president of the new, um, Ch, uh, Tiger Bay Club for the same area, and they closed that under the pretenses. That they didn't have enough members to stay open. But they were capable of reopening the next day, and we have it in writing with the man's signature on it at the state, saying that it didn't have enough members to be open. And there are copies, and it's at thestateundersunbiz.org. Um, we need to look at the periodicals and who has access to them for a thousand dollars. So let, you know, commissioners need to look at those periodicals, and who gets to see them? Um, that's a lot of periodicals. Um, the Florida League of Cities, if it's insurance, like we were told in the last meeting, we need to look at, is it under the right line item? Is it supposed to be under administration, or should it be under insurance in the insurance department? And, or if it's, um, training, does it want to training, or should it be split? The city provides, uh, what are the memberships and publications that are in one line item, or should memberships and publications be in one line item the way you're doing it, or, or not, I don't know. And then there's line items called, uh, CPE, and, uh, there's a, a deduction of two thousand, and then there's an increase of sixteen ninety on page three, and I'm just. They, they don't explain anything to the citizen. Um, and then many lines are truncated for the citizens, and we had no idea what they were, like under special assessments, they were truncated, and there was, uh, they say special assessments, but then we can't read anything. And since it was on a letter-sized page, if it were on legal pages, we could actually read the content. The return on Facebook, uh, we have no evidence to know that there's any return on Facebook. We don't see a desktop report. And then, um, the, uh. Ta, getting rid of the landscaping.
Thank, thank you, Dr. O.
Okay, thank you. And we need to address the way that you, um, gaslighted me before the meeting and, uh, wanted to have the chief hear you say that, because it was a lot, it was a mistake.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Albert McKim, A three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Decisions should be based on facts, not speculation. Tonight, I heard a lot of factual inaccuracies. Let's start with some of the things that our public records officer or clerk cannot tell me. Unfortunately, I find it highly disrespectful that members of staff who would be able to answer the commissioners have already left. Director of Public Services has left, he wouldn't have been required to answer some questions that you might have to ask. This happens at every public meeting. Staff have left before we get the opportunity for you to address things. On February the twenty second of this year, the city had a meeting with St. John's Water, uh, with respect to an extension on the. Contracted Golden Gem Road. First thing you need to know is these are capped contracts, St. John's will not be providing more money without a change of contract. That particular extension was requested because the small pond was going to be used as a reservoir instead of, uh, tanks, which were going to be the pumping station. If you look back, our mayor accepted a check for one point five million dollars, uh, for a, a tank to go in there, will we now have to replace that tank? The damage to the liner was not a natural event, it was caused because there was erosion under the liner, the collapse was because of negligence that occurred in the city. That is stated in Devo's report, where he says that water ingress underneath the liner. Do you think it's likely that we will get a grant to replace liners, which were destroyed through negligence from the city? Highly unlikely grants will be available. So, some months ago, I did mention that I believed that it was going to cost ten point two five million dollars to get Golden Gem Road retention pond back online. I believe tonight, Deo said probably about eight million, that's a best-case scenario. Even if we do not get Golden Gem online, this city is on the hook for twelve point five million dollars, according to my calculations. So that's something you need to look into. But here's the fact of the matter, tonight, everything that Deo Datbuda said was speculation. Because you have not conducted yet test wars on the, on the ground of the, the tiers one, two, and three on that pond. So you've got no idea of what lies under there. If we find there's problems there, each tier will cost you one million dollars per tier to raise with clean. Now, I'm quite prepared to come in and give you the figures. I was asked what it was likely to cost, and I did the calculations. But not only that, I can tell you how long it's going to take to do. What we have proved over the last few meetings is that your experts. And your people who work for the city aren't giving you correct facts. Again, tonight, you discovered, when Deo Datbuda spoke to you, that there were problems at Jason Dwelly, and there's problems with you being able to sell reclaimed water. Fact of the matter is the city should be making money from reclaimed water. You're not going to be able to do that at Jason Dwelly, and I told you this some time ago, that you wouldn't be able to do that. You're gonna be faced with at least two years before you can make money, three years possibly at Jason Dwelly, it's gonna be the same at Golden Gem Road. Ask yourself about Lust Road, Lust Road hasn't operated since Mayor Nelson came into, to, to operation, why? Because it was neglected, Jason Dwelly should be providing us with three million gallons of water per day. We're never gonna make money to balance the budget when there's neglect and misrepresentation in this city. Let the, let the people speak, and let them interrogate your, your representatives. If you don't let us hold them accountable, you're not gonna find out the answers, because you're not experts.
Yeah, I can see my face now. Good evening, everyone, um. Have a few topics about me, four minutes, so first of all, I want to say thank you guys for considering lowering from the forty percent increase, I'm hearing twenty percent, uh. I'll still vote for ten percent, but twenty is better because it really frees me up, um, yesterday I had the opportunity to go drive around, do citizen patrol with the police car and. Greet some citizens, wave, let them see that we, the community, do care, and we're working alongside Apopka PD, so thank you guys, because really and truly, I. I want to do for my community and not have to work too much harder just to cover bills, so thank you guys for that. Also, I want to thank, um. Commissioner Anderson for the suggestion of the, doing that grant. For the last nine years, I have been reaching out to the city. Um, some of you commissioners, thank you very much for your help throughout the years, including ex-commissioner Becker, being my day one. What I will suggest, however, is in doing this, can you guys please have a workshop with the local nonprofit organizations? So that way, we can give you guys feedback on what works for us, instead of you guys having a wonderful program. That we may not be able to meet the criteria and may not be able to apply for, due to some little. Obstacle in a way, I know most of us with nonprofits, Reimagine, um, New Destiny, myself, we all do work together. Behind the scenes and bugs ideas of each other, and it would be great if you guys can, um, have a workshop. So we can provide feedback before this launch, because for example, um, a lot of what we want to do, I know for us at Naomi Kids. Is limited based on funding, during the summer, I reached out, and again, it, I, I don't call names when I'm up here, because it's not about who. It's about the impact, and I did reach out to a member of the city for help, because I had a grandmother who came to me. With four grandkids that recently came to her, she had nothing to do with them for the summer, no way to fund, no funding to pay for us. I reached out, my email was ignored. We still accepted a family, because it's beyond that, I explained to my staff, hey, I'm gonna need some of y'all to put in more volunteer hours, so, then get paid. So we did make it possible, but it would have been nice to have such a program available, so that way we can do more, we have the facility. We have the ideas, we have, but as you guys know, Ms. Blanche, just break down a list that, I might have to re-watch the video to get some of this sinking. But everything costs, so free to somebody does not mean it did not cost someone else. So Commissioner Anderson, um. I, I'm, I'm really glad to see you come forward with that idea, um, I can tell you, you can count on me and my team. Even though they're not here, I can speak for them on this, to support you with this, and, um. We do have parents, I know, who will stand behind it, and this is not just for the sake of Naomi Kids, but for all the youth and the ci, citizens, the elderly. In the community, because they are the ones that are being hurt the most in our community, thank you.
Thank you, and we worked, I know that the, um, uh, Chamber of Commerce is doing a nonprofit, um, trade show. So, to bring in all the nonprofits, and maybe we can, we can incorporate Commissioner Anderson's, so.
Right, well.
To be determined.
That, that would be, that would be nice, um, because I know, for example, the Chamber has dropped the ball, um, this year with. Because I've been working with Dr. Jackson from day one with the, uh, the AYW program, and with the change with the council, and. Since Dr. Jackson is no longer part of AYW, the program has gone downhill, this year, for example, the Chamber had no idea, Corresos had no idea, because they have new people. Corresos had new people, and Apopka, businesses in Apopka was hit hard, we didn't get the right, um, interns, we had to go all the way down to Valencia. College to interview, we went and there were interns from Kissimmee and stuff that don't drive, but expected to get a job in Apopka. So, it would be nice, um, if, is there, how can we get that information, because that's another problem, there's a lot of good stuff out there, but we. Never get the information, it's like, so when and who can I speak to?
I'll let you know.
Okay, well, Mayor, you do have my email, you have my number, you have everything, all of you do, so please keep me in the loop, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna be quick. Virginia Street, do I have to give my address again? No, do I?
Yes.
Yes, two one one nine Palm Vista Drive. Okay, just wanted to first talk about the budget increase, um, maybe you, I'm kind of new to this, and forgive me if I just don't know etiquette, okay? But waiting until the end for everybody to give their comments is probably not the best way of getting your feedback. Because I got, I've got questions, not questions, but a, um, things I would like to have responded while we were talking about that topic. Because when you do all that jumping around, and then you ask us to come up and give you feedback, at the end, you don't really.
It's just a workshop, so you've got two more bites of the apple.
Okay, so all I'm saying is that it would have been more effective if, uh, we could have been able to do it while we were on topic, okay? So for the water increase, I, I am glad that we have gone from that forty percent down to that twenty, twenty-five percent. I do like it that, uh, we are keeping, uh, the, uh, Assistant Director position, uh, in, and also. The asbestos removal, the water plant stuff, and the customer service, uh, position, uh, still there. Um, so I do like it that those things were pretty well kept in, I also had those concerns about three of those things at least. Um, the general fund, um, that we were talking about, anything that supports the fire department, which. Um, I've had them at my house more than five times in the last six years. And they have taken me from my home to the hospital several times because of sickness, okay? Anything that they need, anything they need, they carried me, you know, literally through my house to where I had to go. So anything they need, I, I think they, they deserve more than, uh, what we can give them. Anything to help the police department, I think that we should continue to support our police department for our protection and for their protection. I don't like it when I see policemen hop from county to county because they're chasing money. You know, that, you know, the motive is not right, and you want the, you want them there for the right reason. So, don't give money an excuse for having someone to chase money around, especially for Apopka. We're doing all these things to beautify our area, to do downtown, to draw people in, don't we want the best people protecting us? While we're doing all of these things, what good is it gonna do to make these things improved, and then we have nobody to protect it? You know, so I think that, that, that's the thing that we should continue to support, the police department, the fire department, anyone that services and protects our community. I like the summer camps. My, uh. I, I used Naomi Camp this summer, and my cu, my, my children, uh, learned so much. Not just from a camp, to go somewhere and have fun, but they learn some character things. And those character things you can always pick up at the YMCA. You know, it, it, the, if you saw the interaction that happens, uh, with the leaders and the children there. You know, my kids were upset when it became Saturday and they couldn't go, you know, so, so, um, that kind of thing is going on. Um, Camp Weewah, I didn't even know they had a pool there, and I live, I drive by. Um, Camp Weewah, I didn't even know they had a pool there and I live, I drive by it every day. Um, I know that um there are pools in the neighborhood. Uh, are there, there are pools that I don't, I don't know if, I, I don't know the pool that's over there at Lake Brantley. I don't know what all these other pools are, but I do think it would be good to have some type of research to have something done with that. So I do like that.
Thank, thank you ma'am. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I did say it was quick, didn't I?
Your four minutes is up, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure.
Rogers back at Seven West Main Street. I want to first say thank you guys for um reducing that forty percent rate and that uh bill. Because when I saw that coming, I'm like, this looks a little crazy. But uh, thanks for taking into consideration to reduce that because I just thought that was a little much. Um, but there were some things that were said in tonight's meeting. I just wanted me to get clarification on. Um, the first one being the um Bay Ridge commu- um cemetery maintenance. Now, if I hear you guys correctly, the cemetery is not located in the city of Apopka. However, we're using the city's funds to maintain this, this location. So how is that done? Because I know particularly on my discussion with Orange County, um, with Amoria Gardens, which is in South Apopka, they could not use any grant money from the county to even go on that property because it was considered private. So how is it that the city of Apopka can go and maintain that site? One, it's not in the city of Apopka. To me, it's concerning. I understand it may be some history with it, but ultimately that should be a discussion with the county, if that's in the county. So that's just my particular take on it, but you guys elect officials, you do what you, you may, but I just think that's not um proper format for that. Um, there was discussions about um sidewalks and pine can. There again, I think that was a discussion I brought maybe two or three years ago. Um, safe routes to schools. There should be safe routes with sidewalks being around. All the schools within two mile radius if I was, if I was correct. Um, so if we're gonna look at this one specific area, let's do an assessment of all areas. So that's just not pick and choose. Let's say if we're gonna do it, do it fairly um across the city. So if this is something that really wanted concern to the, to you guys elected officials, let's look at it from a comprehensive standpoint. Um, just not, just isolated um issues. Um, it was a good idea, I think, you know, to talk about the swimming pool and all those particulars. But there again, I guess, I just get heartburn to talk about designing seventy five thousand, one hundred twenty five thousand designer pool. Though, let's first start, what do you want the pool to look like? Okay, we can go to Altima. They have a facility over there. You have Lake Brantley, you have numerous places. Call them up. How much did it cost? Let's start there. It's, designing something when you don't know what you want to spend, that's a little backwards if you ask me. But you guys elected officials, you do what you want to do. Um, and then the, the thing, I know the lady left, but there again, I'm still want to get clarification. And I don't want to come off negative about the Main Street program. But there again, I still, from the outside looking in, I'm trying to figure out, really, is it gonna be a truly a tool used to promote growth downtown? Because every time you guys talk about it, y'all talk about Fifth Street. And to me, that's bothersome because basically you're saying we're gonna allocate money to a nonprofit, but you're always talking about Fifth Street. Where if you realistic look at it, we paid five hundred thousand dollars for a parking lot, made improvements to it. A lot of businesses have gotten money from the CRA for new AC units, whatever things they did. So there again, are we gonna put to, truly what is the impact of what we're looking to do? Then in the same frame, you guys said, well, we have a CRA, we haven't did anything with it since I've been here. Well, there again, so where's accountability from the s- from the council level to see what it is that you want to see? Because we haven't had anything other than, they've done a good job bringing the business in, but outside of that, there has not been anything else built new in quite some time. So if you're looking to do that, we need to get on the ball, actually having development done to bring it in, to increase the value, to increase the foot traffic. So how does it work in a partnership? So I don't see how, there again, it's fifty grand, it is what it is, how it is gonna change that, I think. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Wait, did we, I just want to know, did we, was the public comments actually streamed or was it cut off again?
I don't know.
It was, it wa- it wa- I don't think it was cut off. On that, yeah.
Okay. All right, with that, thank you everybody for coming out.